Welcome to the special meeting of the Bakersfield City Council. Now speaking, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 11 o'clock special council meeting of June 7th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. On March 4th, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings such as this one. Therefore, seating in the chamber is limited. And as such, Councilmember Smith is participating by phone, and all votes will be conducted by roll call. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. This meeting has limited public access, therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk by email or by phone call. If you're here in person to make a public statement, please fill out the speaker card and give it to the city clerk. If you're here to speak on workshop item 8A, we ask that you speak after staff's presentation. But if you're unable to stay for the presentation, you may speak now on the workshop item. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you're here to... If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
One public speaker card has been received from Curtis Bingham.
Thank you. Welcome, and please go ahead and step to the mic.
My name is Curtis, the name of the senior, the servant, the Lord and Savior of God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten son of our holy Father, God Almighty. Thank you for whom God we trust. The Lord tell you he sees and hears us, and he does. He appreciate seeing him being welcome here. The Lord tell us also bless our leaders. So this blessing may be a little different to you, but the Lord is not happy for this reason. The Lord say the servant is worthy of his hire. Okay, the Lord gave you measure N. It's time for the council board to receive some blessings. See, doing this and not receiving anything, it's not making the Lord happy at all. I'm talking God Almighty, Jesus Christ. He want to see this change. And this is one reason why sometime you don't get respect, because anybody think they can just come and be a council person. You know, they don't see no funds or anything. But you guys have earned it. Fair and square, the Lord has given you the money now. It's been years, years, years. Council ain't been getting anything. You guys are probably now one of the most powerful councils in California. And this is one reason why God has blessed you. You have the funds to do things. You guys are blessing so many people. See, it's supposed to be happy time when we come down here. Like today should be happy time. Coming down here just to get some funds to keep things going throughout the whole city. So the Lord would like to see his council children be blessed, receive some funds, so that should be put in the budget too, people can bear it now. And we want to thank you for that homeless shelter that you built. The Lord is real happy with that. You're doing a lot of great work. But also, when you build a city, you build schools, you build buildings and houses, and you put it together, and you say, everybody go get it. People say, I'm not going in there because we don't know if it's safe. So you got to take care of law enforcement first. They got to be first. Remember, the law don't tell the people to do the crime. See, the law wake them saying, honey, I seen you want to get back. He hoping you don't have to run anything. People come and doing crime on their own. They just got to go out and get it. The fire department, they don't set fires. They just got to go put them out. And they putting setting fires everywhere now. It used to be fire season, but now it's all the time now, see? And when you look at the district attorney, they ain't the one bringing criminals in there. People want to see... People want to do crime on their own, and they sending themselves in there. Our city attorney here is a blessing, blessing, blessing. Look at all the money. Our city attorney saves this city with her expertise. So we want to look at things in a great way. We want to give everybody their funds to keep the city going. But you got to take care of those that should be first, first. How many days could you go... Could you go one day without a law enforcement department? Could you go one day without a fire department? You can't. You need a city attorney, district attorney. You can't go one day without them. Think about the law without one day. They'll turn this city down in a heartbeat. So let's be fair. Let's be right. Let's try to give everybody something. But you really got to take care of law enforcement. And thank you for the measure N. You guys being wise enough to cause it to happen. Many are being blessed. So in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, thank you. Thank you. We have a new city manager. It seems like he's right on the ball. I want to see they move ahead. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you very much. Can somebody on staff please close the back door to the lobby, please? Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
No, Madam Mayor, no other speakers this evening.
All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Under workshops, item 3A, department budget presentations.
Thank you. And Mr. Clegg, do you wish to make any statements before we begin?
Mayor and council, I have no introductory statements. We'll turn the time over to city attorney.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I assume you can hear me. First, I want to thank all of you again for adjusting your schedules and being here an hour earlier. I certainly appreciate it, and I know your efforts are going to be greatly appreciated this afternoon by the group that's coming in for that hearing. I'm here today. Again, I'm your city attorney, Virginia Gennaro, and I'm going to be presenting the 2021-2022 budget. And as you know, I always start out with the organizational chart, and I think this time in particular for our newest council members, Councilmember Arias and Councilmember Gray, I think it's important, again, that we see this visually, that under the city council, you have two direct employees, the city manager and myself. And underneath then the city attorney's office, you can see, again, the staff that we have. There is an assistant city attorney position, which is still on the books, but has not been filled. There are... There is outside counsel, which I'll talk about in just a minute. And then we have four deputy city attorney positions, one of which we are recruiting for right now. So we have three that are currently on staff. I have a wonderful administrative assistant that's in the office, that's in the audience right now, Andrew Kadril, who has put together most of this budget presentation for me. And a wonderful staff, senior legal secretary, and two legal secretaries that we recently hired. Both, I can tell you, have experience in the private sector, and one actually came from Long Beach, so she has municipal experience. So very qualified legal staff. In terms of the outside counsel, again, I know that you're very familiar with all three of these groups. We are under contract through July 1, 2025 with Clifford &amp; Brown. They handle most, if not all, of our tort cases. We are under contract through July 1, 2025 with Mick Mart Erroshin and Heather Cohen. And then our water matters are generally handled with Dwayne Morris, and the lead attorney there is Colin Pierce, and he is under contract until 2023. In terms of our municipal accomplishments last year, I think we all know and you've heard that COVID did present some unusual challenges, and in the municipal area, workload was a little bit light, candidly. But we did spend, as you know, a significant amount of time on the urban hen ordinance. We also brought two or three cleanup ordinances to your council. And with the resolutions, the highlights, we're dealing with the airport improvement project, as well as the Brendan Lane Navigation Center. And we also, again, provide the transactional advice to all of your departments within the city. And primarily last year, it had to do with public records requests and refinancing through the assessment districts. In-house, in terms of litigation, we actually do some litigation in-house. We had the judgment in favor of the city for the TOT that was delinquent on the days in. We also monitored a class action lawsuit that was brought by the Attorney General, and that resulted with an incoming monies of about $180,000. Pitch's motions, we handled 28 of them, just to give you an idea of what COVID did to the litigation system. The high in that area is typically between 140 and 160 a year. So 28 was really a valley for us. And then the new law on police records, SB 1421, that has really seen an uptick, and we dealt with 26 requests in that area. One of the items, not on the slide, but you should be aware of, is that our office was actively involved in preparing the investigation for two Cal-OSHA hearings that the city was hit with, having to do with COVID-19. We were, as well as the risk management department and city manager's office, successful in having both of those hearings go well. There were no citations or fines issued on behalf of the city. Just a neat little chart. All of the attorneys in my office bill their time, as they would in private practice. And so you can see by that color chart where the time is spent primarily. There is a fairly large triangle piece there for the city manager's office. Again, that piece will, in all likelihood, go away next year, because that piece includes the four divisions, many of them which are no longer divisions this year. They are now departments. But again, that would be the city clerk, human resources, risk management, and technology services. So next year, most of them will be... They will have separate colors. In terms of outside counsel and their litigation success, I think we would all... I hope we would all acknowledge that it has been... It's probably been one of the most significant accomplishments that this council has done since 2003. Again, with COVID, all of the trial dates in 2020 were vacated by both the federal and state courts. So we have just a tremendous amount of trials that are set for this year, calendar year, as well as for next year. But again, even with COVID, Mick and Heather were able to close two cases, both with no monies being paid by the city. And on the state level, through Clifford &amp; Brown, and a little bit with Mick and Heather, we closed 16 cases, 10 of those with no monies being paid by the city of Bakersfield. Our budget for the upcoming year, relatively small when you compare it to the other presentations that you're going to be hearing today and that you already heard. You can see, again, that our budget is a little over 4.4 million, primarily, as you can see, with the torts and the salaries and benefits. A little bit more in detail or granular for you, when you compare the budget this year to last year, it's a slight increase of about $341,000. And again, that is primarily due to the increase in salary and benefits of about $87,000. And then the $250,000 increase in legal services, that is a result of the contract that council signed many years ago with Mart Erroshin and Cohen. Every so years, every few years, they are entitled to a bump. And this year, that bump is the additional $250,000, and that is where it will stay through the end of their contractual term. In terms of our goals for next year, this is our posture. We want to continue where we are from a litigation posture. I would tell you that it's been extremely successful, as I do every year when I get up here with outside counsel. We want to maintain our municipal services to you. And of course, when appropriate, we want to handle matters in-house to the best of our ability. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Thank you for the good work and for saving our taxpayers' money. As Mr. Bingham noticed, noted earlier, you have indeed, because of the fine work of your department, saved us a lot of money. Colleagues, do we have any questions for our city attorney? Seeing none, thank you for the brevity also, and may the other departments note that there is a special place in heaven for brevity and concise statements. Right. Our next speaker, Mr. Clegg.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, and I would note that there has been some reflection of that competitive opportunity to try and match the city attorney's brevity. Next, we'll have our Water Resources Department. Our director, Art Chianello, will provide his overview.
Thank you. And let the record reflect that Councilmember Freeman did enter before the city attorney's presentation.
Oh, good morning.
Welcome. Do we have copies of... Oh, here they come. Thanks. Good morning, Mr. Chianello. Welcome.
Good morning. Nice to be here. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, I'm Art Chianello, the Water Resources Manager. And with me in helping out with the presentation today, I have Chris Budak, the Water Resources Director. And today, I'm pleased to pronounce to present the Water Resources Department Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Proposed Budget. This slide is our organizational chart. The Water Department consists of two divisions, the River and Agricultural Division and also the Domestic Water Division. Our mission is to provide the following services: Affirm reliable water supply to meet customer demands for high-quality drinking water at a competitive price; Preservation and augmentation of the underground water supply within the city limits; Planning for future growth and meeting increased water demands; Proper distribution of Kern River water rights and delivery of water from Isabella Reservoir to canal headgates and agricultural customers; Operation of the Kern River and flood control management and maintenance of the river, levees, and local drainage basins. This next slide is our staffing complement from fiscal year 2012-13 to 2021-2022. The Water Resources Department has a total staff of 30 and increased from 28 employees five years ago. We are proposing two new positions, a service maintenance worker and an engineer two. For the engineer two, would report to our engineer three that we have on staff. And within the Domestic Water Division, the scope of work, you'll see up there, assist with increased capital improvement projects to support both new growth and increased operations and maintenance due to continued city growth; Supports Water Department to manage more projects internally, and therefore saving some cost markups from outside consultants; Support master planning for domestic water system, annual leak detection analysis, and urban water management planning. For the service maintenance worker, that would report to our River and Agricultural Division, supports increased maintenance in sumps, Kern River Channel maintenance diversion structures, and 2,800-acre recharge project; Supports work rotation schedule for weekend and swing shift work. Next slide, please. Some of the accomplishments we have for domestic water, and we tried to identify our accomplishments with city council goals. You can see the city continues to maintain and upgrade the domestic water system. Completed... We completed a... Or we will be completing very soon this fiscal year, a new water well off of Bolt House Drive, off of Buena Vista Road, a well called CBK 58. Performed filtration media changeout of ground or activated carbon for removal of TCP, will perform repairs and maintenance on fire hydrants, and continued implementation of water conservation and promotion of water conservation. On this budget here, this is our overall department. Our proposed department budget is $40.7 million, which includes River and Agriculture Division, Domestic Water Division, Debt Service, Capital Improvement Projects, and two new position requests. The total estimated revenue for the department is $34.6 million, which includes $3.00 million, $3.1 million for the River and Agricultural Fund, $30.2 for the Domestic Fund, and approximately $1.3 for the Domestic Water Connection Fee. And that is our water connection fee where growth will pay for growth. For the River and Ag Division, in wetter years, the revenue increases due to fees that are in place for transportation and... Yeah, thanks. Right there. Yeah. Are in place for transportation, spreading of water, additional water sales to treatment plants, sales of water under existing agricultural contracts. So the revenue in our River and Ag Division fluctuates between dry years and wet years, and that's historically been the case. For Domestic Water, for the River and Ag Division, in wetter years, the revenue increases due to fees that are in place for transportation. All right, I'm sorry, discussed that already. Let me talk about the Domestic Water Division. The proposed 4% domestic water rate increase will provide approximately $1.2 million in additional future revenue system growth. And additional metered water customers also will provide for additional revenue in our Domestic Water Fund. For the River and Ag Division, the proposed budget is approximately $5.8 million for a proposed overall increase of about 6.1%. Salaries and benefits, the decrease in salaries and benefits is attributable to eliminating temporary pay, which is possible due to a new service maintenance worker. Under operations for River and Ag Water Division, expenses include maintenance of all river control structures, city-owned canals, operation of the Kern River 365 days a year, and hydrographic record-keeping. The increase in operations are due to increases in fleet of almost $160,000 and continued environmental permitting for our Kern River Channel maintenance activities. Capital improvement projects include concrete panel replacement on the city's canals, canal and storm drain fencing, and engineering design for a new structure, which we'd like to build, called a sand ejector, to eliminate sand buildup, which creates operational issues at various headgates near the Bellevue Weir, which is in the river behind Park at Riverwalk. For the Domestic Water Division, the proposed budget is $35 million for a proposed overall increase of 7.5% or $2.4 million. Salaries and benefits, the increase in salaries and benefits is mostly due to the cost of living increases and changes in percent and distribution of employees that support both the river and domestic divisions. Operations, the increase in operations of 2.4 million or 10.18% is the major operational... And some of the major operational increases are due to electricity. Thanks. And just a little bit about electricity. Why has it increased $1 million? Off-peak charge has increased 8%, and a peak charge increased by about 19%. Also, peak time has changed from being May 1st to October 31st, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., to being year-round daily from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This change in peak time corresponds to a time of maximum water demand for the water system. Thus, we have an increase in electrical costs of about 20%. We also anticipate an increase of about $502,000 for ground or activated carbon changeouts, and also approximately increase in $440,000 for increased costs for Cal Water under contract to perform operations and maintenance to city's domestic water system. Increased costs are associated with extra sampling costs and labor associated with removal of 123 TCP. Debt service, our annual debt service of $1.3 million is for treatment capacity in the Henry C. Garnett Treatment Plant, which provides a percentage of our drinking water to city residents. And for capital improvement projects, we have proposed projects to support improvements to the domestic water system associated with operations and maintenance. And this will be discussed in more detail in the following slide. So here is our five-year CIP projects for our domestic water system. And you can see, although we have broad categories of our capital improvement projects, such as wellhead facility upgrades, pump station upgrades, there is usually projects that fit well within those categories. And you could see some of the projects there, or all of the projects there that we have proposed for fiscal year '21-22. And then as we go out four more years into the future, there's some projects that we have great certainty on, that we've listed in there, such as our ongoing service connection replacement program. We do miscellaneous water main extensions that enhance our system, enhance the pipe looping of our system. And then as other... As we identify future projects, we'll tend to fill out this chart next time we come before you next year, which may have a little bit more detail in there. But these are the projects that we're fairly certain of at this point. I was asked a question once before, is how do we compare... How do we compare to other utilities? And so it's always hard to do that comparison, because a lot of water utilities use pumped water or surface water, or a lot of utilities have to purchase water. And so I was looking in the AWWA, American Waterworks Association, they have a benchmarking booklet with many metrics in there to compare. And one of them that I thought was apples to apples was this chart that we have up here, which talks about how many customer accounts do we have for full-time employee. And you could see the, in general, in the survey that American Waterworks Association performed, there's generally about 428 customer accounts per full-time employee. The top quartile could be 583 customer accounts per full-time employee. When I look at the city's domestic water system, you know, we have about seven city employees within our office. And through our O&amp;M contract with Cal Water, they provide for about another 51 full-time employees. Given our customer accounts right now are about 48,500, that gives us a number of about 836 customer accounts per full-time employee. So the... What that shows is that we continue to be fairly efficient and actually above the top quartile in terms of customer accounts per full-time employee. A few proposed projects for our domestic water system for '21-22. We're looking at performing some design to upgrade our, what we call our interface tank, which is behind our office on Buena Vista Road. It's a 10-million-gallon storage tank. It needs some electrical upgrades, as well as maybe additional booster pumps installed. So we want to go through the design phase on that project. We have a growth project, a new well we call CBK 65, which will support the Stockdale Ranch development. And the capital funds that came out of our connection fee have already been allocated for this project. So they've already been encumbered. We'll still continue to change out carbon for removal of TCP. And also, we do anticipate an annual cost of about $500,000 for continued monthly sampling and reporting of all of our TCP sites. And all of that reporting is required to be submitted to the Department of Drinking Water. And we do have an ongoing electronic telemetry flow measurement project called the SCADA project. And we'll be finishing up that project. And that will work out really well, because we'll integrate nicely. We had a very old SCADA system, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. It's being upgraded right now. I think it was... It's much overdue. And that project actually is finishing up now. And I heard it was going to finish under budget. The original budget was like $1.2 million, and then we're going to finish up below budget on that project. Just a location of where the city's domestic service area is within urban Bakersfield. We are the light green to the west and southwest. And basically, our service area goes north to Norris Road. The dividing north-south line between Cal Water and the city's domestic system is generally Stein Road on the east. On the south, we go to Taft Highway, and we actually have some new development right below Taft Highway, and then we go all the way to the west. In terms of water conservation efforts, we have been doing a good job. The most recent water conservation data, which compares May through April of 2020 versus the same months in the predominant... In the pre-drought baseline year of 2013, the city residents reduced water usage by about 11.49% per person. So even though our system continues to grow, when you look at conservation on a per-person basis, individually, people are using less water now than what they did before the drought in the year 2013. The next slide, then, shows how we support conservation. We have several programs online where we offer a $300 rebate for high-efficiency washers. We offer a $100 rebate for high-efficiency toilets. We also up to $125 rebate for smart irrigation controllers for sprinklers. We have free home conservation kits that a person can just request and will be delivered to them, and also free high-efficiency rotating sprinkler nozzles. So you can see for the calendar year of 2020, approximately how many requests and how many rebates we gave out for each one of those categories. And this is the same conservation categories that Cal Water uses in their system. So it's very common. There's no confusion between if you're in the Cal Water system or the city system. We have the same rebate program for residential users. And just transitioning over to the River and Agricultural Water Division really quick, again, some of our accomplishments in 2021, this current fiscal year. You can see that we've diverted over 354,000 acre feet. That's not all city water, but it's all other water districts' water as well. And we run that water through canals, through the river, and divert it to their canals, so they can get it up to their water customers. We replaced 16,000 feet of some old fencing along our Kern River Canal. We replaced 161 concrete panels within the city's Kern River Canal. We did some... Removed a rock crest weir within the channel by state rate... within the channel by State Route 204 to clean up that part of the channel just a little bit. We continue to service trucks and lakes and the solar-powered bees that circulate the water there to keep algae and keep the water clean. And you could see a few other projects that we do there. And also those projects, I did put in parentheses how they tie into certain city council goals. And for upcoming fiscal year '21, '22, for the river and ag operations, we continue to prioritize delivery of the city Kern River water for their treatment plants to city recharge facilities. And also, we honor some historical contract obligations. We are now complying with the required state Sustainable Groundwater Management Act law and the city's priority conjunctive use plan, which is outlined in our groundwater sustainability plan. We also have a separate SCADA project required under Senate Bill 88 by the state of California to measure electronically the flows in the Kern River and all the diversions. That project is in process right now of being completed. And of course, we always want to provide a safe and reliable water supply to the city residents. And I think that concludes my budget presentation for today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chianello. Thank you for your efforts to save water and your other accomplishments. Colleagues, Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Marygo. Good afternoon. Thank you for coming. Great presentation. We're getting, we're getting better at it. We're getting going through these things quicker.
18 minutes.
That was good. No, it's very interesting. I was wanting to understand more about how the citizens take advantage of this rebate program. I've never heard anything about it. And when you're looking at the numbers there, is that just 140 or is it 100? It's just 140 people, right? If you go back to that slide, the top, the top one was, were 130?
Yeah, I think that was for the washer machines, the first ones.
It was for smart irrigation controls.
Oh, yes. So that would be one irrigation controller per home. And so we're talking about 140 residents. That's what that number represents.
Okay, so how do we get that message out?
So thank you for asking. This is a great opportunity to get the message out is through this budget presentation. We also have it on our Water Resources Department website under Water Conservation. And there's a link, a direct link there to get you to the website, the Cal Water website, where you can fill in the information to apply for the various rebates or conservation kits. We also, Cal Water also has educational outreach for water conservation. And they are also promoting our program as well as their program since we have similar programs. So, and I think we might have done a general info once or twice at the beginning of our dry year this year on a Friday afternoon gen info to also get the word out as well.
Good. If I may, Councilmember, I was just going to add, I will confirm, we have done two cycles of conservation information in gen info and through some other media posts. But this specific program, we could look at doing some additional social media posts specifically about the rebates because it might get caught up in the broader conservation information. So we could probably single these out as a couple of advertisements or marketing for this program specifically.
I think that'd be a great idea, being that we're in another drought year, that we need to get that word out. But I really want to congratulate our city, our citizens, that they've been conserving water. I know, you know, it's so easy when you're brushing your teeth just to let the water run. And I've been real aware of that myself. When I'm brushing my teeth, I don't need to let the water run, you know? Just simple things like that that we can do that make a big difference when there's a lot of us. So thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith, do you wish to speak? I don't see any, okay, I don't see any other requests. So thank you, Mr. Chianello. And the next speaker now?
Yeah, Mayor and Council will have Rick Anthony, our Recreation and Parks Director, next.
Well, welcome, Mr. Anthony, to your first meeting. And you always get the fun presentation because there's a lot of fun stuff in your department.
That's right. We are the Department of Fun. For the record, Rick Anthony, the new Director of Recreation and Parks for Anarondo, Anarondo County. That'd be Bakersfield City. Anarondo County was my, I've done this so many years under there. So give me a little bit of grace being the newbie here. But certainly, I'm excited to be here and happy to be home. Want to thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers and also City Manager for bringing me back here. I also wanted to give a special thanks, if you don't mind, just kind of bear with me here to Darren Budak.
To your right.
Tried to surprise. There he is. Okay, moved on me. Just wanted to acknowledge his leadership through the pandemic and also the extended time of being the acting director while I convinced my wife to join me here in Bakersfield. So I think I owe him for keeping my marriage together. And also, he's just been a consummate professional and ultimate team player. So if we couldn't, can we give him a hand? Darren, would you mind standing up? Thank you. With my team, I also have Raj Misri and Keith Howe also in the audience. So Bakersfield City, getting right to it. We have 61 parks, soon to be 62. This does include approximately 600 acres of streetscapes as well. Some of our accomplishments in FY '20 and '21. In spite of the pandemic, we certainly were able to have an impact on our communities. We, the pandemic had a certainly negative effect to our organized activities. But as you all can attest, our parks were open and tripled in visitation. We were making them safe so that our many residents who were homebound could have a safe haven and respect for dealing with some of these issues here. So you can see some of the things that we were able to do. We also were able to create some new initiatives, such as Rec the House, which provided new activities every week for our residents to enjoy. Also able to keep the swim, McMurtry Swim Center open, obviously following COVID protocols. And we successfully continue vital partnerships with our programs, with partnerships in our programs. Some of our capital improvement accomplishments for '20 and '21, although there may have been some COVID-related delays, we're still able to complete several projects, such as the one you see here, which is the Seasons in Tevis Park Playground Replacements. A special note that when we do replace these playgrounds, we also improve them. We are adding shade structures and making them ADA compliant. Directly related to PSVS funds, our rapid response team had an increase of about 96% in service requests. And I think a good fact that we need to note is that we were able to close out a lot of these requests in about four to eight days. And I'm told by staff that's a big difference compared to prior years, which was approximately three, three to four weeks. So here are some examples of those particular efforts there. And I want to highlight a little bit of these slides just to give an example of how well we've worked with the other department's teams. As you can see, there was some dumping in the middle of the road. And our team was in that area. And we decided we needed to respond quickly. But again, a great collaboration with water code and solid waste. Again, great examples of just the progress we made this year. Our FY '21 and '22 proposed budget is a moderate increase mainly due to utilities and personnel costs. We're asking for a total of six new positions, one service maintenance worker and one facility worker from the general fund. Also, one light equipment operator and three service maintenance workers from PSVS funding. If I could spend a little time with this slide, this slide is very familiar with me. This is probably a trend that you would see in most recreation parks agencies over these last 10 years. This highlights our staffing from 2008 to 2022. And also, that line there reflects the amount of acres per employee that we've had at our staff. And it's been well documented by NRPA, our National Recreation and Parks Association, that many agencies are just now recovering from the recessions of 2008 and 2009. This was true from my previous agency. And as you can see, it's true for here in Bakersfield City. And when you think about the population growth in the city, I think that number is 57% from 2000 to 2019. It's really astounding that the department has only five more employees than it had in 2008. It does speak to the resiliency of the department to do more with less. I think that was probably the motto of all recreation and parks agencies over the last 10 years. But when you factor in the maturation of our trees and landscape, the growth of the housing development, the increased demand to create and maintain more positive and more pristine and complex streetscapes, the increase in homelessness, trash, and vandalism, the need to provide more recreation opportunities for underserved communities, and the need for our residents to feel safe in our parks and our trails. We certainly are challenged to make some bold decisions in terms of what we want our department to look like in these next few years. So I'm excited to, alongside with the City Manager, to roll my sleeves up and try to make some bold decisions on improving what our department's going to be. A few highlights as we get right into our capital improvement projects. Most of our requests are focused on deferred maintenance. Just a few highlights of those proposals. We are requesting a facility needs assessment for MLK and Silver Creek. Also, Jastro Park improvements. And then we also have in-the-budget requests for five additional playground replacements. And that's a total of $6 million in our CIP request. So since this was a competition, we certainly wanted to make this quick for everybody. And that is the end of our slides. And Mr. Budak is here, as well as the rest of the staff, to address any questions you may have.
And if I may, just add two comments really quickly. I noted in an update to city council last week that we would be discussing some proposals to increase our maintenance efforts along the Kern River Parkway. Because that's a cross-departmental effort, we're going to address that at the end of the workshop in a summary presentation of slides. And so that's why it didn't show up here. But Parks is definitely going to be a big part of that proposal. But that's not included in what you just saw here. As well, I would just reflect that deferred maintenance that Mr. Anthony referred to. That really gets at a majority of that list that we looked at last year, last June. We had an $8-million list of deferred maintenance. And between mid-year allocations and this allocation, we've gotten through just about the entirety of that list. When I say just about, there's a couple of projects that we think probably deserve some re-scoping just for the change in time. But everything else on that list is programmed for our CIP this next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clay actually just answered my first question regarding the CIP budget. So will we then get a revised CIP list based on, you know, other assets that are falling into disrepair? Or perhaps within the time that we had that initial list until now that need attention so that we can begin working on that as well? That's my first question. And the second thing is, it's one thing to look at deferred maintenance and it's another thing to look at enhancements. And so what is our plan to look towards the future over the next two, three, four years? To look at how do we provide enhancements that our constituents deserve? And, you know, to meet the, you know, ever-changing demands of our community and recreation needs and to stay competitive with other cities, frankly?
We can produce for council a list of maintenance that's either deferred or pending. Some of it is that there's a, there's a regular cycle for some of these replacements. And as we took a hard look at that list, we acknowledged that some of those were just a year out and they could wait that year in the regular replacement cycle. So we can provide an updated list of, you know, projects that are still remaining to take place in future years. To your other question, there is $1 million in the proposed budget through PSVS to do some park reimagining or reinvention. And we have not identified in advance those specific parks. We're going to ask the Recreation and Parks Department to propose one or two parks to do above and beyond just the deferred maintenance list. But then I'll ask Mr. Anthony to speak a little bit to some of his thoughts about doing a parks planning and assessment that might give us more information and perspective on where we go in future years on that re-imagination.
Yeah, that's actually one of the top priorities for me as far as my goals is to update our master plan, which I believe hasn't been updated since 2008. And there's been significant change here. But that is certainly a document that will potentially give us all the answers that we need in terms of identifying areas of underserved communities, where we need to focus some of our resources at in the future. And it's basically the roadmap for the future for the department. So I'm encouraged that City Manager is agreeable that we undertake that in the next few, hopefully, months or years.
Great. Thank you. A couple of other items, if I may, that kind of caught my eye during this presentation. One is the Amtrak operations. It looks like there's a 10% reduction from last fiscal year. Just to note, we are moving Greyhound to the Amtrak property. And so I wondered what that reduction is about? If someone can kind of describe that?
Not at all. Councilman Gonzalez, yeah, the 10% change over there is exactly that from the Amtrak coming over there. It's now a shared, 10% will be done by Greyhound and 90% by Amtrak. So that's just, that's why the reduction.
Understood. Thank you so much. And then finally, just want to commend Recreation and Parks for all the work during COVID-19. Many of our community members sought out our facilities during COVID to remain sane and for an outlet. And so I appreciate all the work that your department has done, particularly with regard to McMurtry. I know many of my constituents reached out to me complimenting the city for remaining open and providing that pool for them. And so thank you so much and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And speaking of McMurtry, Mr. Anthony, the Polar Bear Plunge on January 1st will be a lot warmer than it is back east. But we'll be seeing you out there. I think staff will expect you to go down there. One question regarding the Beal Park. The summer concerts are, summer band concerts are coming up again. And we've spoken in the past, I know last year and probably the year before, I've mentioned the challenges with the lighting out there. Has anything been done? Mr. Budak, you might know more about that. But Beal Park, if you'll notice, that the band always has a hard time seeing. And then as people leave, it's really hard to see. It's just really dark in that area.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We've worked closely with Public Works on that. And there was some initial design work done to come in and do some lighting improvements. And we'll have to move quickly with Public Works now to get them in place for the coming concert. But we've looked at it and there's some improvements that need to be done out there in addition to the lighting.
Thank you. And I think our concerts are starting fairly soon. Mr. Anthony, thank you again. Welcome to Bakersfield. You're going to love Bakersfield. It sounded something better. Welcome home.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, our next presentation is our Public Works Department. I might suggest from a time check perspective, we had anticipated this being a working meeting with a working lunch. And if there is appetite for the council to have a brief break to get lunch, this next presentation is a longer one.
A long one?
Yes, I was, the nature of Public Works, Stuart can't do much about how many operations the department has. And so if there was a desire to just take a quick break for folks to get their lunches and then we can get into the presentation and move through it. Or if you'd like to start the presentation, we can do that as well.
Well, let's go ahead and take a brief break for lunch. And then we'll, well.
I believe there's boxed lunches in the caucus room. So you could always bring them with you.
Councilmember Smith, I think, is requesting to speak.
Councilmember Smith, we'll bring you lunch too. In your refrigerator, second shelf.
I appreciate that. I did have my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So, Madam City Clerk, can you see? So, Madam City Clerk, can you see his hand raise? I didn't get any notice. Councilmember Smith, please go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the presentation. First, the city manager mentioned the cross-departmental work that we're going to do on the river and the problems that we've had there and along the Parkway. And I appreciate that and look forward to hearing that at the end. But the Parks Department obviously plays a big role in that and appreciate their work. And I also appreciate, you know, really moving up the work on the neighborhood parks and getting those new facilities in and updated facilities. And I also wanted to compliment Parks Department for the work during the pandemic. The parks were very crowded. The bike path was packed out every day. And the work that they did was much appreciated in the community. And parks are, parks do make life better, like they say. So appreciate Parks Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Colleagues, any other requests to speak? All right, so we will take a brief break before we go into our next presentation.
Okay, reconvening the meeting at 12:04.
And now we have Public Works. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Go, members of the city council. Stuart Patterson, Assistant Public Works Director, and right now, the Acting Public Works Director, pleased to present the fiscal year 2021-22 Public Works Budget. This is a slide I'm sure most of you are familiar with, the BLNC project, major accomplishment this year. Unfortunately, the lower right slide is a large sinkhole that we had to respond to at Brundage Lane and Chester Avenue. And that other slide is really just a representation of some of the efforts that public works staff made to COVID-19 as far as some of the safety, safety measures and protocols put in place. Many of the city facilities received things like Plexiglas barriers and separators and other features to ensure safe distancing. And I'd like to take a chance to acknowledge and recognize all the public works staff over the last year, both in the office and in the field. We were determined as an essential department. And through the whole pandemic, we've had at least 85% of all of our staff or more at work that's both in the field and in the office. So this is our Public Works Department mission statement. I want to read it real quickly. It says, "To develop, manage, and maintain the city's infrastructure system in a cost-effective and efficient manner while providing quality services for the citizens of the city of Bakersfield, and to achieve a sustainable community that promotes the health and mobility of all citizens and visitors by incorporating high-quality facilities and transportation network systems." And that badge, that icon below it, that's representing the accreditation of the American Public Works Association, which, for some of the council that are newer, we were originally accredited in 2015 by APWA. Bakersfield is only one of 172 agencies throughout North America that are accredited out of the approximately 29,000. So we're very, we're very proud of that. It shows compliance with recommended standard management and work practices. So we were re-accredited in 2019, so it's every four years. This is our staff chart, our organization chart with the Public Works Director, of course, on top. This current fiscal year, we actually added an additional Assistant Public Works Director. I'm the one, Zach Meyer is right here with me today. He is our other Assistant Public Works Director. And I'd like to mention Roseanne Padley. Her name isn't up there or her position, but she heads up the administrative section. And she's also responsible for this budget presentation and pretty much our whole budget. So this is Roseanne behind me. This is our staffing chart. This graph shows you staffing in, throughout the years from '08 till proposed fiscal year. What's in green is the traditional staffing positions. What's shown in the orange color are the PSVS positions that essentially are support positions to, like for fleet predominantly and other positions. The total on the proposed for next fiscal year will be the third year that we have added positions, most of those in PSVS. So out of the 464 total positions, we are at 448, not counting PSVS. So still below the 2008 number. Oh, sorry, I went too many. These are some service level indicators comparing 2008 to now. I'd just like to point out a couple of those numbers. Traffic signals, if you notice, we've added 106 traffic signals between 2008 and 2028. That's a 33% increase in the number of traffic signals the city is responsible for. And we've added one traffic signal technician in that period. We've gone from six to seven. Some other big, significant numbers are the amount of homes served by both sewer and refuse. Those are a large number of citizens that have been added. This is our new position request for the fiscal year. Under the general fund, we have three positions. Two are in streets. One will be in the subdivision section of engineering, a GIS technician. These are all critical positions. Streets, those will be crews on the street maintenance division. The next fund we're showing there, refuse fund, which is an enterprise fund, we're showing one commercial position, an equipment operator, and one in residential. Those are four, just to add for the additional routes needed. Equipment fund, we're adding a technology system analyst. And under PSVS funds, we are requesting a civil engineer three position and a maintenance craft worker. Both of those positions would be dedicated to just PSVS-funded projects. So the design engineer, the civil engineer in design, would be responsible for all of the PSVS projects proposed. And general services would be related to the various PSVS-related remodels and repairs for those facilities mainly. Okay, here's our budget. All funds summarized together. You can see the total is a 3.3% increase. That, the 3.3% reflects a total increase of $4.7 million. Under the operating group, the increase is approximately $7.5 million. Of that, the refuse fund makes up $4.5 million of that increase. That's the largest share. One of the, like many departments, I'm sure are telling you, the other increases to the operating line item is increases to PERS, liability insurance, fleet rates, and other increases. 1.5 million of that is due to the PSVS-funded Clean Cities Initiative program being transferred to Solid Waste, which was previously budgeted in Development Services. This is the same numbers, just broken out by funding source. Some highlight, if you notice, PSVS, same thing. It's a 171% increase, but that's pretty much because the Clean City Initiative program is being transferred to the Solid Waste Division. Same information, just in a pie chart. You can see our department, how it's broken down. Refuge Fund, 20, or, I'm sorry, my vision's like, $62 million. That's 42% of the budget, followed by the equipment fund, 32 million roughly, 22% of the budget. General Fund and the Development Fund combined, 27 million. And then the smaller portions as shown. All other funds is gas tax, Transportation Development Fund, Amtrak, and the airport. This slide shows the refuse fund operating budget increase, which you see at the bottom is shown at $4.5 million. The largest share of this is $1.5 million increase due to the rise in bin activity, which caused an increase in disposal costs for commercial customers. However, we will have offsetting revenue from the commercial customers by this same These are proposed rate increases. I spoke last council meeting about the 5% rate increase, which your council did approve. That's in the budget. Rates going from approximately $223 to $234 annually for residential customers. Sewer rates, there is no rate increase proposed for next fiscal year. This is the chart, I think a lot of you have seen, and I mentioned in the budget presentation last council meeting, showing how, even though that's the old number, the 223 for Bakersfield, even if you put in 234, still one of the lowest rates in the state to comparable cities. I think city of Glendale might be a few dollars cheaper, and there may be others. But we usually compare them to these comparable cities, and we show some other ones as well. This slide is detailing how local road maintenance funds are budgeted for next year. The bottom line, this total is $59.2 million. That includes some estimated costs for right-of-way and other concrete improvements like sidewalk and curbs and gutters and those things. $34.1 million out of that is strictly street maintenance, pavement maintenance. Either that represents the budget for our street maintenance division, as well as all the capital improvement program projects that are budgeted and by fund. So each of those breaks down the portion out of each fund in the budget. So now we have accomplishments. These are trip accomplishments. Most of you, I'm sure, have driven on this. It's a drone view of 24th Street, completed December 2020. Also, some drone photos of, on the right is the Enos Lane and Stockdale Highway Roundabout, also completed December 2020. And on the left are the Kern River Bridge improvements. That's kind of an older photo, but those were completed in December as well. Bell Terrace improvements, again, that's an older photo. It's completely finished and open now. Traffic signal, that's actually all within the county, but was part of the trip program. And there was a delay with the traffic signal there at Wyville, but that's completed now. More trip accomplishments. These are the projects in progress that you're aware of, the Bakersfield Freeway Connector project, as well as the Main Line Corridor project. This is the action plan for trip for next fiscal year, which is essentially continuing these and some other projects. A new project that should be bid shortly into the next fiscal year is the Rosedale Highway widening from Verdugo Lane to Callaway. And continue right-of-way acquisitions for Hagaman, as well as the getting projects through completion of design for the multi-use path. And one project that's in the budget too is the 24th Street cul-de-sac walls. This is our engineering division accomplishments for this current fiscal year. They designed, received bids for 38 projects. These are some of the ones highlighted. We completed both a downtown master storm drain study, but also a downtown master sewer Some more accomplishments. There was a solar feasibility study for city facilities, which resulted in a citywide solar project that is ongoing. They're in permitting stage right now. Hopefully, we'll be starting construction on some of those by late fall, early winter of this year, this coming year. The photos are nice. I like to focus on them. Those are a before and after. That's Truxton Avenue. I'm not sure if that's the driveway into the hospital, Mercy, but I think it's somewhere on the south side. More engineering accomplishments. Those first two projects there under pavement rehab, those are federally funded projects that are up for award at next council meeting on the 16th. So those will start soon. And we've completed Kentucky Street, as mentioned, the ribbon cutting was just last week. And the Pacheco Road multi-use path is out to bid right now? I believe, yes. So that will be awarded soon as well. And the media improvements were completed a few months ago. More accomplishments for engineering. And again, I like the photos. They'll show the old ramps. That's an alley, I believe, on probably L Street. And you see the before and after, much improved access for people with disabilities. This is the event center floor. I wish it was a better photo. The top one, you could see, it was in pretty bad shape. It makes it look a little better in this photo, I think, but it was all cracked up, spalling, delaminating. There were issues with it. And on the bottom photo is the new concrete. This is General Services Division accomplishments. Of course, that's BLNC, one of the dorms. And on the right, I think that's them installing the fence and the signage for BLNC as well. More accomplishments. These are the things our crews are doing every day, removing graffiti from 9,000 sites, stripes 750 miles of city streets, and responded to 1,300 streetlight requests. These projects are both in the convention center or adjacent. The bottom left is the rehab and upgrades to one of the meeting rooms there. This was, I think, the room that Oversight Committee used for their hearing. And then the right is the bathroom, which they look like new now. They're really nice. More General Services accomplishments. Completed, oh, they're light emitting diode LED fixtures at 13 parks and two city facilities. I think the facilities were the parking structure at 18th and I. I'm not sure the other one, but it might have been the PD. City Hall North. Thank you. And of course, as I mentioned, they have assisted with COVID-19 protocols for separation with Plexiglas and all the sanitation was, most of that was accomplished with city crews. Streets, Streets Division accomplishments. I won't name every one, but again, you can see the photos. These are photos of actual work that was done by our crews. I will point out, we re-implemented an alley program. We don't have a separate budget item for doing alleys. We are trying to get to alleys. It hasn't been done in many years. And that's probably a bigger number than 11 miles that have been accomplished this fiscal year, maybe closer to 12 or so by the end of the year. Some more Streets accomplishments. If you, I don't know if Councilmember Smith can see this presentation. I'm sure he's familiar. That's Stockdale Highway Bridge at the Kern River Parkway Trail. It was kind of a tight curve. We'd received several complaints and our Streets crews went in there and essentially both designed and constructed it. They had some help from our traffic engineering division, but it's a much improved intersection, essentially, from two sections of the bike trail. Fleet accomplishments, of course, as a result of PSVS. Fleet is a much busier division now and have put 61 vehicles into service. Again, that was, that will probably be, I'm sorry, yeah, I think that's right. But that number will be a greater number by the end of the fiscal year. These are some wastewater accomplishments, giving you some numbers about how much was treated. Again, this is a division that Again, this is a division that doesn't get a lot of recognition, but of course, we had to continue to treat wastewater throughout COVID. Solid Waste Division, some of their accomplishments. Of course, some of the biggest volunteer activities, such as the Great American Cleanup, were postponed due to COVID, but there were several smaller volunteer-driven, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful and other groups that had events, and they still, you can see the numbers, what they were still able to accomplish this fiscal year. Some more solid waste accomplishments. A very popular event is the bulky item drop-off events. We also established the MRF pilot program at Bark, which is reduced costs. This shows a solid waste action plan for next fiscal year. One of the items I highlight is a cost-to-service rate study is in the budget for next fiscal And now, our capital improvement program. This is the proposed CIP budget for the all departments. First item, of course, is Public Works, $78 million roughly, which includes the TRIP Not much else to talk about there. This is the CIP, broken down by division or functional group. These are the PSVS, CIP items proposed in the budget. I think most of you are aware of these. The implementation of the streetlight study is actually, I think it's an additional $1 million for upgrading streetlights throughout the city, citywide. Next phase of the Mill Creek Ballard Improvement Program. These are some potential projects I wanted to list that could be considered at a mid-year. They're all median improvement projects. We selected those because we feel they're fairly easy to both be designed and prepare and get ready for bid if there is funding available for those. I suppose the exception would be the last one, New Stein Road. That's a very long stretch. I don't even think 2.4 million included the entire length of the area that could be upgraded, but it can be done in stages or in phases. These are some of the street improvement projects proposed in the budget. That first one is federally funded RSTP funds. The next one, White Lane, Gosford Old Rivers SB1, Union Avenue between State Route 58 and Bell Terrace. I believe that's a small section that is a city-controlled area. These are some of the other street improvement projects that aren't necessarily pavement rehab. Some of these are widening projects. These are all essential projects that are needed. Some are right-of-way acquisitions. You see the Panama Lane, the Third Bullet, McKee Road. That's design and right-of-way acquisition. And the last one is a study in conjunction with Caltrans to look at bridge improvements for the Beale overcrossing at Kentucky. It's a really old bridge. More street improvements. There's three traffic signals proposed. Actually, one is a set of flashing beacons at near schools. And the fourth one is the next phase of the adaptive traffic signal program that has been funded so far. The first phase is by CMAC funding, federal congestion mitigation funds, air quality funds. And then the three federally funded multi-use path projects funded for next year. These are some sewer and storm drain improvement projects, just highlighting a couple that are in the budget. That storm drain on V Street, that's kind of been a continual flooded area. And the downtown sewer manholes is the first project out of the downtown sewer study that we're planning to implement. These are a whole bunch of wastewater treatment plant. I won't say deferred maintenance, but it's maintenance that's coming due. I won't, of course, read all these, but you can see there's quite a few projects that are essential, and I think that happens when you open up a brand-new treatment plant at one time, and you bring all these systems on, is several projects are needed at the same time. Some other facility improvements. There's a few projects at the airport. These are all, other than the first one, the airport hangar doors uses, I think, local airport funds. The other two are grants, federal grants from the FAA that we receive, and then several refuse facilities at the Greenway site. There's a few more listed of the facility improvements proposed in next year's budget. And put this one in. This was a recent addition to, this is the convention center lobby. We're proposing in next fiscal year, $50,000 to hire a design firm, hopefully a firm that is familiar with entertainment centers and events, that can take a look at and make some suggestions. And the proposal would be the following fiscal year to budget for construction. Some of the issues we face, simple issues, you can see on both sides, it's kind of a panoramic photo, but those doors, the entry doors are, I believe, from 1963, the original doors. We have problems keeping them operating. We have problems even getting parts anymore. And what I understand, several of the interior doors are original, and we have issues with those. That's just a start. Those are functional and even safety things, let alone the aesthetic aspects of the lobby. And a couple of TRIP projects that are in the budget. Again, I previously mentioned the 24th Street cul-de-sac walls and the Hagaman flyover project. And with that, that concludes my presentation and available for any questions you may have. I'm not going to win the contest, I know.
No, but 27 minutes for that much, that's really, that's a lot of accomplishments. Thank you so much, Mr. Patterson. You'd mentioned median improvements, possibly at mid-year, and I noticed they're all on the, I think they were all on the west side. What are our considerations for some of the more challenged areas, the older areas of our community for mid-year?
I think the list was developed because it was known areas that we had previously been made aware of, and we haven't studied, I wouldn't say we've studied them yet, but they were ones that we could grab and include because they were fairly easy to look at and determine some costs. I'm sure citywide, there may be other areas we can look at.
Mayor, I would speak to that question as well. There are a couple of projects that are grant-related, that are going to address some medians in East Bakersfield, and I think that we'll be able to leverage those funds there. I think also the community revitalization dollars, the $3 million that you'll see in a subsequent presentation, is intended to be able to do infrastructure enhancements, largely in our disadvantaged neighborhoods, that are going to be proposals that are coming forward from staff about how to spend those $3 million, and some of that, we expect to be some street or lighting type of work as well.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the great stuff, yes, I have seen the pictures, and I also have been by that many times, the Stockdale Highway Bike Path work, and it looks great, and I really appreciate that. And I mean, just, I really appreciate Public Works, you know, I'm an engineering background. 9,000 graffiti sites, wow, that's, you know, 30 plus or minus a day, and our city looks much better because of our graffiti work. We've got a lot of great bike path projects coming up, the Stockdale Ranch by Kern and Hagman, and look forward to those. Pacheco Road, good work on the BLNC, getting that going. I know Public Works is really involved. Exciting to see the alleys being repaid again, 12 miles of alleys. So just congratulations, Public Works, appreciate the great work, and they really do make Bakersfield better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
Actually, I thought there was somewhere, Union Avenue.
Yeah, I did see that.
Because I know we had talked about that. We talked about these because they're kind of the corridors into our city, the most attractive. You know, Ming Avenue has blacktop medians. It's kind of an embarrassment. These were part of the branding, Trucks and Avenue, Long River, blacktop medians, really horrible stuff. But I noticed we still have the, I think this was the original recommendation staff that went to the Vital Oversight Committee. We still have the, as a definite improvement, the landscaping along the West Side Parkway. Well, I'd love to see landscaping on the West Side Parkway, but I think many of us have expressed that's a much, much lower priority than cleaning up the parkways and the streets within our city, like Ming Avenue, like Union Avenue, and that that could be done in a future year. But right now, if we have limited funds, we wanted to clean up the major boulevards of our city. And so I want to reiterate that. I know the Oversight Committee practically came unglued on that. I think they did press releases, they were so upset about it, that that was not our highest priority this year. So I want to echo that from this council person, that making our streets inside this city, when you get off the freeway, you drive down, look nice, is a higher priority than this year, maybe not next, than landscaping the West Side Parkway. Another couple of comments. Hope all of our council people notice that I think there were $81 million, our expenditure coming from our enterprise funds, which is a fantastic thing. That means we've already saved the money. We have, you know, we had charged every month, that the enterprise funds pay for themselves. I want to be sure everybody understands. We budget, we put aside certain amount of money every year, we then draw down from it. It's not, oh my God, we've got to, we've got to do this, something with the sewer plan, and we don't have any money. We have budgeted, it's there. And I would like to see us do something like that with our street repairs. If they cost us, I think it's the $31 million this year. Well, if every year, you know the plan, long-term, what do we have to put aside, like when they budget? Is it $4 million a year, is it $5 million? Call it a sinking fund, just like, make it like an enterprise fund, only we just say, we're putting $45 million into the pot. We will then draw down from it, so we don't just say, well, we don't have any money this year in the general fund, so we can't do any roads, because we had a bad year. The taxes went down, or the sale, we can't, if we every year do this budgeting and treat it like an enterprise fund, it's kind of an internal one that we do, something like that, we wouldn't have that problem with roads. We could do, always do the roads we need to do. And I can tell you, from the public standpoint, that's probably one of the three, they talk about public safety and roads. And normally, you're, now, I know talking about homelessness the last couple of years, but normally, it was public safety and roads are what the people expect, they think they're paying for with their tax dollars. So just, Christian, maybe you and Stuart, let me just think about it. Is there some way, and we go forward, kind of like we did with our financial stability fund, it's exactly the same thing. We're going to put us, we said, well, it'll take us three years. Well, we already did it in two, but we're going to put, you know, $10 million a year aside till that fund is built up. And it is there for emergencies, or a special project, you could borrow from it. We could do the same from this fund. Oh, we have a special need. Just, I'd like us to consider that seriously. The other thing that I didn't see in this budget yet, and maybe there's money buried in there, there's enough for it, the, let me just call them improvements to the bike path. There's a lot of places where the trees are missing. It looks terrible. Sprinklers are broken, the pavement is good. If we're going to clean up all of our parks, which we've agreed to do, we have the money, we want to do it, the bike path is a park, to me. It's a public community park, and I'd like to have some money in here, I don't know what it costs, a million bucks, something where we have everything in first-class condition on that. And we talked about potential widening in key areas, at least a reserve, and if we can. We talked about striping, or some reflector, something that separates the pedestrians from the bikes for safety sake, that were signage that talks about, you got to slow down here, but all the things we talked, they all cost money. And that ought to be a priority, I think, this year, to make it safer for the pedestrians and the bikers, irrespective of whether e-bikes go on it or not. We have a huge problem right now, because we don't, in certain crowded areas, we don't separate pedestrians from the bikes. They just blast through each other, and there's a lot of problems. So I don't think that's that hard to fix, but I'd like someone to be paying attention to that, and I'd like to be sure we have a little money in the budget when we figure out what we should do to the bike path, to make it signage, replace dead things, fix broken pavement, and treat it just like one of our, I don't know, how many parks did we say we had?
61.
51, well, it's the 50, it's the 52nd park. And if we all think about it like a park, that it's one of our parks, we have to keep it up, I think that'd be a better way to think about it. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I just want to take a moment and celebrate Public Works and all the work they've done over the last year, particularly with regard to BLNC, Greenwich Lane Navigation Center. I think it was within nine months that you were able to turn that place around and open the facility. And, you know, there are a lot of doubters and naysayers out there, but I had faith. And there are a lot of us who did have faith in you and in Public Works Department, and you got it done. And I just want to commend you all for the hard work there and making that happen. This is a crisis, and you responded in the appropriate way, by making it a number-one priority and getting on with it. So thank you very much. A few things I just wanted to comment on. Thank you so much on behalf of the residents of Westchester for focusing on the cul-de-sac walls, decorative walls on 24th Street. I think that will finish this important project, and it's a necessary amenity. Thank you. There was a question earlier about disadvantaged neighborhoods and some of the improvements that are required. I agree with that. I will say that Public Works has been working hard, at least in my ward, with regard to some of the improvements in certain medians, including one on Brown Street, on East Truxton. We're working on the Beale overpass and looking at improvements to that. So there have been a number of steps forward on the east side, and I appreciate the tentiveness. Not to mention, well, actually, let me mention, the alley improvement program, which has been a huge push of mine since the first moment I joined this council. And I just really appreciate staff getting on it and all these alleys. A lot of our constituents, a lot of our residents live at half addresses. They live off of the alley, many of whom have, you know, limited incomes, and those potholes, crater-sized potholes, do significant damage to one's car or vehicles. And so this is a big deal for lots of our families, and the fact that we're going through every alley systematically on the east side to repair those is a huge step forward for our community, and I want to thank you for that on behalf of all those families. And then finally, you know, there's a conversation about the West Side Parkway and some comments made by the Oversight Committee. I would say, it seems like we could do both, and I would hope that we would take a serious look at the West Side Parkway and make those improvements, because I hear the complaints about the way it looks all the time, and I think it's a priority for us to invest in. So I just wanted to ask, Mr. Clegg, is it, I keep hearing like it's either or. I mean, is it this sort of Manicheanistic choice here, or are there, is there a possibility for us to do, you know, both, you know, street improvements and also make some significant improvements to the West Side Parkway?
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor and Council. I think it is a question of being able I think it is a question of being able to do both. I think there still are some decisions to be made in how much of both we can do, not limitless resources, but in our last presentation and the summary of this workshop, we'll address that specific referral from Councilmember Arias to look at, you know, what are some of the other ways that we could, you know, use those highway funds. One of the reasons that we looked at street medians was to be responsive to that request, and so we looked at some projects that were, we could readily tee up to spend some of those funds. I think we can do, I think, a fair amount of both, probably not full amounts of both, but a fair amount of both, and we'll share some of our ideas about how we can get at maintenance in a much more proactive way along the Huron River Parkway. But there's also good reasons to keep some of our dollars for the highway projects, because there's a state-funded grant program that requires local match to leverage those state funds. And we'll speak to that, like I mentioned, in the last slide deck of what staff's recommendation related to that, you know, $5 million is.
Okay, fine, I'm waiting with bated breath. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation today, and it's exciting to see all the work that's being done. Before I was a city councilwoman, I wasn't really paying attention to those Bakersfield trucks that were driving by me doing different things, but now I am. And there was one thing, though, that when I first saw this budget, I brought to our city managers' attention, because as the average taxpayer, I was like, wow, we're going to replace 123 vehicles in this budget? So my first question was to our city managers, how long do we keep those vehicles before we start replacing them? And I was very pleased to find out that the average, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christian, is seven years, unless they become problem children before then where they're, so could you, for the taxpayers out there listening, I think that this is a really important point, so they understand we're spending their money wisely.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our average is seven to eight years, and I'll let Stuart speak to that if there's additional details to that. Industry standard is shorter than that, it's around five to seven years, and we've made a choice to stretch out a little bit beyond the industry standard. Not in a way, though, that we don't want to get these older vehicles that cost more to maintain, and then it becomes actually more costly, but we have a very robust system that tracks the performance of the vehicles, and can they, can we get a few more miles out of them? If they're showing some signs of greater maintenance earlier in the cycle, then we actually do surplus those sooner, but we try to get, maximize as much efficiency out of our vehicles as we can.
Go ahead, Stuart.
I would echo that exactly. I think when it comes to passenger vehicles, halftime pickup, smaller trucks, and you can even include the police cruisers in that, we tend to be able to keep our vehicles on the road a little longer, it's probably right around eight years. But we have a lot of specialized equipment as well, and sometimes that is a shorter life because of the use that they get, and sometimes it's longer. For example, a street sweeper, we might have about the same amount of time, but it may have had the complete vehicle on the chassis and drivetrain replaced in that period of time, just because of the amount of use that we give them. So the cost may be higher, even though the replacement is about the same. So it's not all in just the age, but I think citywide, that's about where we're at, just about eight years. And I don't really know the comparison to other communities, but that's helpful to know, that we're keeping them on the road a little longer.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because we need to be very diligent in that area. The other thing, I'm seeing kind of a consistent thread with the presentations that are being made today, that we're under budget as far as employee count in comparison to other cities in most every department. And I think keeping us lean and mean is extremely important. At the same time, we don't want to, we don't want to put so much pressure on employees that they want to leave the city either, so we've got to keep a balance there, but I'm pleased to see that thread through today and other presentations. Today, as I was driving in, I noticed going down 24th Street, I don't use 24th Street that often, but I did today, and I was so pleased with the beautiful landscape, streetscape that's been done there. It's low maintenance, we see these guys running all over the city, mowing lawns everywhere on these medians, it doesn't make sense. So moving forward, I really appreciate seeing that. If we can get the maintenance down, that's going to save taxpayer dollars, so I was really happy with that. So anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you for doing a good job for the department, and we ask, continue to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Just following up on the fleet issue, on Saturday, I was at Martin Luther King Park, and there was a code enforcement group working together with Flood and picking up some refuge related to homeless persons. But they were talking about a mechanism that is not working, that is really a trailer that helps raise up some of the debris and really equipment, such as the shopping carts. And that was not working. I've run into the same issue before with code enforcement, where they're saying that they have to make extra trips back because they don't have this lift. And with homelessness being a priority for the citizens, what can we do to be more efficient in that regard, so that they have the right equipment? They were using some large dumpsters and having to make multiple trips to pick up the debris for that, because this piece of equipment wasn't working.
I think, Mayor, a couple of thoughts on that, and kudos to the resourcefulness of our rapid response teams, because they've found ways to borrow some equipment and rent and lease some equipment. As these teams are new, the equipment requests, especially those specialized vehicles, they typically, they're not quite like a fire engine, where, you know, it takes two years, 18 months to build a fire engine, but some of this equipment, we ordered, you know, almost a year ago, and it's being built, and with the pandemic, there's been significant delays in the deliveries of some of our specialized vehicles. And so we made a commitment, and in the current fiscal year, to provide more equipment and better equipment to Rapid Response, and even at mid-year, and the proposal we're going to share with you later today includes some fairly significant equipment recommendations to really make sure Rapid Response has the tools to do their difficult job. Part of it is just the timeframe to get that equipment here, and we've seen delays that we've been frustrated about as well, until it gets here.
Well, thank you for that response. And so with the anticipated need that we will have more homeless encampments to clean up, let's start thinking even towards the future, knowing that it does take longer. But thank you for the good work. And now, Councilmember Freeman. Changed your mind? You canceled. We're still showing up here, but we'll go on. Councilmember Smith, just checking in. Anything from your end? I think you're finished. Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson, and we appreciate the good work of Public Works. I know there's been a lot of work and a lot of accomplishments this last year.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our next presentation is Development Services. Our Director, Chris Boyle.
And I know that Councilmember Arias needs to leave at this point for something unexpected, but we still have a quorum.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, esteemed councilmembers. It's my pleasure to present the Development Services Department proposed budget for fiscal year 2122. I may be just a little bit biased, but it perhaps might be the most important, $12.75 million on today's docket. A little bit about Development Services in terms of its employee counts. Currently, there are 78 employees in Development Services, and today's discussion is largely about personnel in terms of the request by, yes, Mayor?
I don't think we have that presentation, do we? Everybody seems to be looking around for it. We do have, oh, just looks different. This one doesn't match your slides.
I would suggest that there might be one or two slides potentially different, but we'll move forward and make sure you get the corrected.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a little bit about the department's current makeup, 78 employees currently, and today's discussion is largely about personnel, and there is a request department-wide for a total of 13 employees. Before I move forward, though, I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of my business manager, Mario Roscoe, a new employee with the city, who I rapidly threw from the fire into the frying pan in the preparation of this budget. And I also wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Planning Director Paul Johnson and Building Director Phil Burns, who have herded cats for the last 12 months during the pandemic and maximize the utility of the resources that we've had available. That said, my request is for an additional 13 employees, and I wanted to talk about that within the context of my presentation. The presentation will largely follow review of planning and building division separately, and will focus on their accomplishments for this year. We'll talk about those budget requests departmentally, as well as a slide on capital improvements, and then we'll talk briefly about goals moving forward. I don't want to spend time discussing this slide to much thoroughness, in light of the fact that I could probably talk for two hours about what the Planning Division does on a daily basis. They are the starting point, the table setter for development within the community, they feed our billing division, which ultimately you see dust in the air and projects coming out of the ground, and during the pandemic, that hasn't stopped one iota. Whether that be standard permitting or long-range planning for general plan amendments and zone changes and the like, the Planning Division has had a stellar year. You look at the numbers that they've provided in terms of just up until this past month, you're seeing wonderful growth in terms of the site plan reviews, general plan amendments, and zone changes and the like that have been processed in the last fiscal year. So when you look at that in terms of being a table setter, that speaks volumes in terms of the amount of development that should occur as a result of their efforts and being cycled through the Building Division, ultimately to building permits onto occupancy and the like, noting that Development Services would be an application to occupancy one-stop-shop here in the fair city of Bakersfield. We look at Building Division's accomplishments for the year, it has been a great year. You know, we went into a pandemic kind of wondering what would happen. This time last year, we did something like only 50 new single-family home constructions, and we all pondered what the future would look like. But for fiscal year 2021, we are on pace to build more houses over the course of this fiscal year than in any fiscal year in the last decade. The same thing can be said for just total overall building permits. We're at a pace to have a 7.5% increase over fiscal year 1920, which is significant, and you can see an upward trend line over the last four years, that looking at our site plan reviews is promising moving forward. We're about to go live with our EVOL Project Docs Electronic Plan Check and Permitting Software System. That should be happening in the first quarter of fiscal year 2122. Our Code Enforcement Division during last year stood up Phase Two of the Rapid Response Team, and at mid-year added a third, five-member Rapid Response Team. And our hope is to be able to more efficiently respond to homelessness encampments and trash sites, noting the great point, Madam Mayor, we are, we rob Peter to pay Paul in terms of our equipment, and we want to thank the partnerships with our, with Public Works, Parks. If we can find a trash truck that may be at the end of its term, we want to extend that term just a little longer, because we are, we are in a lag in terms of getting that equipment to maximize efficiencies, and that's topical to our personnel ass. Nonetheless, even with staffing concerns aside this year, we've managed to complete three proactive campaigns for the 24th Street, Nile Street, and Beale Street corridors, and we're looking forward with your support to speaking to Mr. Freeman's concerns, Councilmember Freeman's concerns, to begin to address our primary streets throughout the city, noting that we just haven't had that personnel in place where we could get out there and proactively look to effect a more, more of proactive campaigns within the city. But you mentioned Ming and the like, and they do need some code enforcement attention, and we're hopeful that we can do that, you know, upcoming fiscal year. My dad was a mathematician, and so I can't help but be a numbers guy. When you look at total response to calls, there was a 20%, 25% increase overall in code enforcement in the last fiscal year versus 2019, and there was a 205% increase in Rapid Response Team calls at 1,434 calls. RT cleaned up about 1,300 sites and removed about 4,000 cubic yards of trash and debris. They made, call it 1,100 contacts with the homeless population, collaborating with Flood Ministries, that were instrumental in the referral program to the Navigation Center after it was stood up, and continues to be proactive with our homeless campaigns. I was speaking with Mr. Rodriguez this morning, and when I was speaking with him, he was on the river. Code Enforcement Section overall addressed 126 individual council referrals to date, and I'm pleased to note that we have closed 95 of those, continuing to work towards closure of the remainder. Code enforcement overall, whether it's illegal dumping, homeless encampments, property maintenance issues, including vacant buildings or abandoned vehicles, code enforcement continues to make Bakersfield better, and will continue to strive moving forward. You look at the development side from building, residential development, what you're seeing there is pictures of new development that's been final in the last 12 months, but they don't match the text component. Those are residential projects that have been approved through site plan this year, which you expect to see coming out of the ground in the next year. So you can see this pipeline of development that really indicates growth, growth within development moving forward in the next fiscal year. The same can be said for commercial development, wherein you're seeing pictures of new, newly finalized commercial development within the city, but the four bullet points in your slide are actually recently entitled projects that haven't gone to permit and are not in construction yet. So we see a positive growth trend within Development Services moving forward. So let's talk about the individual ass. The Planning Division has a request for two additional associate planners for their advanced planning section, and their focus would be on the general plan update. But there's other deliverables that are in the books right here and now in terms of municipal services reviews, climate action plans, and our six-cycle housing element update. I would expect during this fiscal year to complete the MSR and the climate action plan during this next fiscal year, while standing up, while standing up the general plan update as well as the housing element update. And the housing, the general plan update is maybe the most important document that will be prepared for the city for the next 20 to 25 years. You look at the importance of the 2002 general plan, where in its lifespan, you've seen the city increase by nearly 50% in population and by 32% in total land area, and it really speaks volumes to what this general plan has to be prepared to do as Bakersfield moves better, as the sound of something better. So we have numerous new state guidelines today, there's changes in SEQA, and we appreciate council's direction in the preparation of a comprehensive general plan update to speak to making the city all it can be in the next 20, 25 years. In terms of the Building Division ask, there are 11 employees total within the Building Division in terms of their request, and let's look at them individually. Three of those are within our Permits and Inspections Division, and the Permits and Inspections Division Inspections Division has been significantly taxed in the last year. We noted the continual growth in permits. Well, that's, for each one of those permits, there is multiple inspections that are completed by the Building Department in order to ultimately to grant occupancy to a structure. And our building inspectors are averaging nineteen daily inspections, where the industry standard would be twelve. I know of building inspectors that have gone out the door in the morning with twenty-five inspections on their docket for the day if approved. Adding the two building inspectors plus the mechanical and building plan checker, who would have a component of inspection within their job responsibilities, that would reduce our daily average down to fifteen, which is manageable. I need to be successful in my ask to the Council as it relates to this. These positions are absolutely necessary. These people have been working very hard for the last year. In terms of the Rapid Response Team, this slide really talks about that circled component is the fifteenth, pardon me, the third Rapid Response Team, that five-member team that was, that is in the process of being stood up from mid-year. And I want to take the moment to thank Council for their continued commitment to Rapid Response Team and what they do, and we're excited to help that team go live. Most of those individuals are hired now. As you know, Rapid Response Teams focused on the homelessness efforts, and when you look at how this department collaborates with Flood Ministries, Bakersfield Homeless Center, the Mission, the Navigation Center, the railroads, Caltrans, the Police Department's Impact Team, parks, Clean Cities Initiatives, what's the common thread within all of those discussions is RRT's role within their efforts. We really are kind of the mortar in what we're standing up as an effort towards homelessness, and I'd appreciate your continued support. With the growth of RRT, you know, when you originally approve something and you start to build that tool, over time, you see needs progress. And two of the needs that are important to Rapid Response Team and to code enforcement overall is, first, a supervisor two. We mentioned all that equipment coming online. We don't really have a skilled supervisor in terms of training, equipment logistics to make sure the right piece of equipment is in the right place at the right time and the like. So, there's a proposal for the equipment side of a Rapid Response Team, those people that are handling the skid steer, loading trash into hallways and the like, that a supervisor two be added to this complement, as well as a code enforcement manager. This team, the code enforcement team at present amounts to forty-one individuals, and it's where code enforcement was as few as eleven people, twelve people, just a few years ago. It's time we have a code enforcement manager to manage that tool, maximize efficiencies moving forward. On the other side of code enforcement, there's a request for six code enforcement officers, three for the north and three for the south sections, noting a need to get out there, be more proactive, be more responsive to the needs of the community, the desires of Council in terms of referrals and the like. Two or four of those individuals would be code enforcement officers, and two would be assistant code enforcement officers. And the code enforcement officer, the assistant code enforcement officer, really allows the staffing to be able to grow their own code enforcement officer. One of our struggles has been finding qualified candidates to join the code enforcement team. Having assistant code enforcement officers allow us to kind of build in training, find the right people, train them accordingly, allow for secession into a full code enforcement officer title. But the need for these individuals is significantly supported by the comparable cities, where you have a code enforcement officer serves nearly twice the number of citizens and serves three times the area as comparable cities on average. Let's talk about the numbers as I wrap up. I mentioned the twelve-point-seven-five million-dollar budget, and that's a twenty-six-point-nine percent increase over the last year. Of that, about one-point-seven million is in salary, and about seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand is in operating. Of that, the overwhelming majority is associated with the Acela biohazard, downtown biohazard teams, which were transferred into the Development Services from Economic Development. The other things include other council referrals in terms of vacant buildings, receiverships, a short-term rental ordinance that will be discussed at the next P and D, legals for the aggressive annexation program, and the like. Lastly, there are some startup costs. Those are one-time capital investments for standing up the requested employees. In terms of the balance of where funding comes from Development Services, it's a pretty even mix with about one-point-nine million dollars in total coming from public safety and vital services, as well as four-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar addition coming from the Development Services Fund, which is those three employees that are associated with permits and inspections. But ultimately, in the end, the percentage of budget is balanced across the General Fund, the DVS Fund, and PSVS. There's some small capital expenditures that were noted by Public Works in terms of updates to the building, and we have some problems with our parking garage. We're going to do a study to address that, and some security cameras associated with some ongoing vandalism and the like. Lastly, our goals. Of all departments, perhaps PSVS goals are most closely aligned with Development Services and the Economic Development Services Department, and we look very hard to take those goals and make them accomplishments of the city. And along those lines, the Planning Division has a very busy year ahead of it in terms of standing up the General Plan and moving forward with a lot of the ongoing projects that are in-house. And the Building Division, the Building Division will be going live with its online permitting and enhancing code enforcement, the Rapid Response Teams. And all that said, I'd appreciate your support for Development Services budget for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-one, pardon me, twenty-one, twenty-two. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Appreciate your customer focus and wanting to support a business-friendly environment. Certainly, the building inspectors are needed. I know when we don't have sufficient inspectors, it impacts our developers, it impacts our businesses, and it causes them economic challenges also. So, certainly, we want to continue to support you in that regard. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have a lot of good work. Couple of questions, but the Rapid Response Teams that we did not have before PSVS, thirteen-hundred sites, that definitely is exciting as far as cleaning up the city and doing the work that the community wants. More inspectors are necessary. I know Council repeatedly says we want to be business-friendly, we want to be, have a growth economy, and in order to do that, we have to provide the inspections necessary, and people aren't just sitting out there waiting. Code enforcement, you know, we've had trouble with houses sitting empty, houses being vandalized, houses becoming neighborhood nuisances, and the more code enforcement can get out and help clean that up faster, the better. So, I am in support of that. I do have one question. You know, we get the single-family home number, fifteen-hundred, for last year, but the multifamily, the units and the multifamily that are being built, to know what kind of balance we're having in our housing would be good to know also. Thank you.
I don't have the exact number, Councilmember Smith. I appreciate the question. I can throw out an educated guesstimate as it relates to the number of new multifamily units that are coming online in the city, something in the neighborhood of three-hundred. To date, this calendar year, we do not have any new permits for multifamily coming through the pipeline, pardon me, new requests for multifamily development coming through the pipeline. I brought out May numbers today, and we're still actively looking to finalize the permits that were processed last year. You're seeing two major complexes coming online. So, I'm hopeful that as we move forward into this upcoming fiscal year, we see even more activity for multifamily moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I want to just give a big shout-out to code enforcement and all the work that they're doing, especially Rapid Response Team. If you can, just go back, Mr. Boyle, and give everyone a fist bump on our behalf and just thank them for us. I know they're in the field, day in and day out, doing this work. Sometimes it feels like it's just, you know, doing the same thing over and over again, but it really is making an impact, and cleaning up these sites is really important, and it's part of our longer-term strategy. And so, please convey our deep appreciation for their work every day.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will.
Thank you. Can we go back to one of the initial slides when you were talking about the ePermitting software? Can you tell us, I think you said it will be up online in the summertime, is that right?
That's correct. I expect to go live sometime in first quarter.
Perfect. Yeah, that's another great benefit for us to become even more business-friendly, and I'm really excited about that. So, please keep us updated.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And just in line with the Rapid Response comment from Councilmember Gonzalez, I'm really pleased to see the coordination with Flood Ministries also. So, it's not really a choice that we are cleaning up and displacing homelessness, or we're only attending to homeless persons. What I saw on Saturday was the team working together, and so you had Rapid Response Code Enforcement out there cleaning up the homeless encampment, but at the same time Flood Ministries was there, and we were providing services to Dwight, to Fernando, to Vanessa, and to Victor. So, they were not displaced, they were being given services for a better way of life and a way where we can take care of them as human beings also, and at the same time, making sure that our parks are clean. So, thank you for that coordination. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I'm really happy to see, and thank you, great presentation, Mr. Boils. Increasing, we talk about this a lot as council members or their city manager, the number-one, you know, problems that we're having and challenge is the homeless situation. The citizens keep crying out for us to get this fixed, and we're working very hard at it. Sometimes it's just such, it's so frustrating because we feel like we're making headway, and then we go back a few steps. So, very important in this budget is to include these extra code enforcement officers so we can get them out there quicker, have a quicker response. The Rapid Response Team, again, having a quicker response, we're going to hear more about that at the end of this today. But when I saw the increase in calls, twenty-five percent increase in one year to calls that you all are managing, that is amazing. So, good work that you're able to keep up with it. It's, like I say, it's a challenge for the city, but you all are doing a good job. So, increasing the number of people we can get out there is so vitally important. The other thing is, being in the remodeling business, hearing that you're bringing on more inspectors is really good news. We personally, right now, because of the amount of calls, our projects are being delayed. Our production manager is having to sit in his truck for four to eight hours waiting on an inspector, which for us, as a small business, is a big deal, that I don't have that person in production for four to eight hours in a day, and I'm not the only one. So, getting a quicker response for the developers, everything moving along, I think it's a great investment. So, good job, Mr. Boils. I appreciate what you all are doing, and again, pass it down as Councilmember Gonzalez said to your team, because they're doing a great work out there. Sometimes we feel like we're playing whack-a-mole out there, don't we? We get to take care of one area, and it's popping up in another, but we keep after it, we keep putting the pressure on and finding services for these people like Mara was speaking about. We're going to get this thing under control, so I'm very optimistic for our city that we're going to get it taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I don't see any other requests to speak, so thank you very much, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you.
Mr. Clegg, are you our next presenter?
I am, Mayor. I'm here in Council with our Economic Development Director, a position vacant for the time being, and with our Assistant City Manager Jackie Kitchen who are with us. I'll be filling in on this presentation. Thanks to Kevin in our office for helping to tee this up, and also thank you to the Economic Community Development Principal Planner Team and our business manager there for helping to put this information together, and I'll walk through this. Just a quick note, I've mentioned this to City Council, and I've mentioned this to our senior management team, but we will have an Economic Development Director onboard as of June twenty-first, and that, some information about that individual will go out in our gen info this coming Friday. So, just to give a little bit of background for this presentation, we'll go over some history and overview, and then some highlights. The history is worth pointing out because this department, more than others, is unique in that it was in place through the Redevelopment Agency many years ago, but then, over time, as the Redevelopment Agency was dissolved, the functions, some limited functions of this department, largely in our entitlement area, were maintained as part of the Community Development Department. Then, as one of the priorities of the Public Safety Vital Services tax measure, we decided to ramp up and increase staffing within that division of the Development Services Department. And so, there was additional staffing, additional duties and scope as part of that department. But then last year, again, in acknowledgement that this is an important body of work and needed more focus and more attention, we created an entire department. And so, we'll walk through what the Economic and Community Development Department looks like today, and a few position requests that we have going forward. This department has our economic development function, that is business support, business attraction, business retention, community development, which is largely our entitlement funds to support the community. We created the Homeless Services Division in this last year to have that focus, and then we're looking to add a Housing Division because of the number of funds that are coming forward and the importance of affordable housing. It's taking some employees from our homeless division and some new employees and creating this division to really focus on moving forward as many of these affordable housing projects as we can. Then, our Convention and Visitors Bureau and our arena and entertainment contract will be part of this department moving forward in the future. This department is largely funded by those federal and state funds, or largely the federal entitlements, and it's a pass-through for many of the state funds. And there's a few of those general fund functions that we've just maintained, but as you can see there, the vast majority of these new positions are within the Public Safety Vital Services tax. We're seeing an increase in this coming year. The majority of that, again, is in PSVS, and we'll walk through what that represents, but it is some additional staffing, but also some additional program funding. On the staffing side, I mentioned the new housing. We're looking at having a Housing Development Principal Planner. The good news is, because of the grant monies that are coming through, we can charge administrative costs to those grants and be able to create that position without cost to the general fund. The same is true of an Associate Planner One. We have a couple of positions, those Planner One and Two- We have a couple of positions, those Planner One and Two positions, those are in the Economic Development section of the budget, and it's designed to give us some more capacity to do that business retention and that business recruitment, as well as supporting some of our economic development programming, like business assistance, and we're looking to have some programs out of the ARPA funding, like entrepreneurship programs, and we'll need staff to help us manage those different programs. Of particular note, we're going to use some staff to really be those ombudsmen's or ambassadors for development. This is giving us additional capacity to have staff in the Economic Development Department work with Development Services and Public Works to help facilitate developers and help them through that process. If we have, in particular, a special project, or even just an individual who's expressed some frustration with trying to navigate our system, we'll have that ambassador available to help them navigate and walk through that process. We've included two positions as mid-year requests, and there's a couple reasons for that. We think we need that level of capacity, but there are a number of new employees in this department, so many so that we actually have some capacity challenges to onboard that many individuals in that short of a timeframe. So we want to add two planners at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then come back at mid-year for another two positions to help pace that out over time, because we need to get those staff hired and trained up before we go and hire additional staff. But they will be focused, again, on that economic development side as we staff up that unit increasingly. Just the three main units today of the Economic Development Department are here before you. On the Community Development side, again, a lot of those entitlement projects, many other grants, and our affordable housing. On the homeless side, we're looking at our Navigation Center, as well as much of the work with the community, excuse me, the Continuum of Care Collaborative. And then on the Economic Development side, we have several programs around redevelopment, business assistance, our TCC project, and other grant projects that help with neighborhood revitalization. And we'll go over a few spotlights through this process. So this map just helps to get a picture of where some of our CDBG and other community development programs are taking place. Those are our key census tracts and key project areas where we're doing the park improvements, the curb gutter and sidewalks, as well as some of the specific programs like Flood and the Senior Center. The number of funds that are coming through for HUD programs and state programs has increased significantly, and we'll show you some numbers in a moment that the work in deploying all those funds has really ramped up. Also, on the affordable housing side, a number of affordable housing projects. I think it's important for this council and the community to acknowledge that the amount of general fund dollars that are going towards affordable housing in this community is remarkable. Many other cities pass through the state funding and the federal funding for affordable housing, but it is fairly rare for cities to dedicate this much funding from our own general fund resources towards affordable housing. I think that speaks to the power of the Public Safety Vital Services measure that can allow us to get at our biggest needs in this community, but also the will of the council to put it towards these priorities that aren't always things that are city-funded. So there's a number of projects that have come forward in the last two years, and we're looking at, you know, close to 250 new units from these different projects. And this is just a map that helps to show the locations for these projects. And you can see there's some good distribution there. These are the, another look at the numbers of those units. We have spent, you know, that $8.7 million in just this last two years, and we're looking at, from the PSVS side, over time, those 328 units as we bring more projects online. On the homeless side, I'm not going to speak to every bullet on this slide, but it just shows the level of work and detail that goes into each of those elements that I mentioned earlier around homelessness, managing the partnerships and the programs and the contracts under this, a significant amount of work. And in this particular year with the COVID grants, as well as the rental assistance, there's been a number of additional dollars, I think thankfully, but also some pretty significant work to deploy those dollars to the community. This is a look at where the funding has come in, and this is a slide I was referencing earlier. When you think about housing, we've received significant additional dollars, homelessness as well. Prior to this year, we were looking at, you know, a few million dollars each year to be able to deploy towards homelessness. The city really ramped up its general fund spending on homelessness. But if you look at the funding from the state and the federal government, we're looking at $45 million to be deployed in homelessness funding. Largely this year, that's in that Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We are making a significant investment in PSVS, but we also have these other dollars from other state funding sources. This is actually, does not include some of the surplus budget proposals that the state has made, and so this number is going to increase even more. And this chart just shows, you know, again, how much additional funding we're seeing coming forward. It's important to take just another moment, as is mentioned in other presentations, but the success of the Breditch Lane Navigation Center, the construction was done in short order. The fact that we've been in operations for six months and already served, you know, 600 individuals and, you know, placed 42 into housing, although the other day, Mr. Haynes was saying probably 45, closer to 45 at this point, is remarkable to get this all done during a pandemic year. You can see here some of the numbers that show some of the intakes and outtakes, but again, we've had 45 housed and 14 temporarily housed. It's important from there, may update as well. And throughout this process, there's been a number of partnerships that have been formed. You know, we were working very closely, I think Mr. Haynes also pointed that, or it was Mr. Duz, I believe, pointed that out, that we built in these partnerships with other entities and other agencies to be part of our Navigation Center from the very get-go, and it takes a lot of work to foster those partnerships and to continue those conversations with key folks on an ongoing basis. On the Economic Development side, again, there are several aspects to that division. We're looking at several grants, including a Brownfield Grant on Union Avenue. We have another grant that's called a STEP grant that's for the southeast Bakersfield neighborhood, and that's in addition to our TCC and RSB II grants that are getting at some of these same issues. We've had a number of opportunities to continue to support businesses, to participate in the B3K process. This is also where our Economic Development Strategic Plan is being managed from, and continuing to look at additional tools to have in our toolbox to help with development as we move forward with implementation of our Economic Development Strategic Plan, which we'll be wrapping up in this next couple of months. In this last year, we've also put an online site selector tool that folks, developers, can take a look at this and find properties that match some of the criteria that they're looking for. The EOA program, we, prior to this year, didn't have a lot of activity, but in this past year, we've issued out five different EOA grants. We've got a few more that are in the works, and it's good to start seeing those monies be deployed. Also, through CDBG, we received additional monies specific for COVID impacts, and we targeted those towards business support. And so we did make 17 micro grant awards, but we also have several million dollars, it's close to $3 million in CDBG COVID monies that are going to go towards a number of other loan-to-grants through that program. And then finally, here's just some notes about our Economic Development Strategic Plan and the B3K planning process, that there's lots of good information coming forward, good plans are getting in place, and we'll be ready to move forward with implementation as we bring a new director onboard and staff up the department. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. You'd mentioned affordable housing and the strides that we've made with that. We hear often from our constituents the need for affordable housing, and you're mentioning how we are ahead in comparison to many other cities. Would it be possible in the future to get some information about how we do compare with other cities of comparable size and...
We absolutely can.
Yeah, anything related to that would be helpful, I think, for our public, for them to have an understanding of the work that's been done. And we have a lot more work to do, but work has been accomplished.
Yes, Mayor, we can provide that information. I want to be clear that I think in the straight number of units, we have some catch-up work to do, I think is fair to say, but we've been doing that catch-up work much faster than most, and we are contributing much more of our own funding to that problem than most, and I think that's where we really are ahead of the game, and we can provide some of that information.
Yeah. The amount that we're contributing, I think that would be very helpful. Any requests to speak? I don't see any from our colleagues. Let's take a five-minute break, please. Okay, reconvening at 1:41. Mr. Clegg, the next presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Visit Bakersfield, the presentation presented by Mr. David Lyman.
Welcome, Mr. Lyman, and you know the expectations are always great because you always have a very engaging presentation, so let's top it.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good afternoon. I'm David Lyman with Visit Bakersfield. Thank you for sitting aside a few minutes for me this afternoon. I always enjoy coming and chatting with you about our successes and our plans for the year ahead. Congratulations to Councilmember Gray, and I see he's gone, Councilmember Arias, for winning the chance to experience what few others get to, which is the city's budget review process. And I'll change for the rest of you, since the previous time I've seen you, Visit Bakersfield is now part of the new Economic and Community Development Department, as you just heard Mr. Clegg say. And this is not to be confused with the old Economic and Community Development Department, where we started as a city entity, oh, many years ago. And when that department was resolved, dissolved, we moved to the city manager's office, from where I've been speaking to you for the last couple of years, and now we're in the Economic and Community Development Department, the new one, not the old one. I tell you all of this not to confuse you, but to reassure you that no matter where you may find us on the city's organizational chart, our goal remains the same, which is to help people spend their money in California's ninth-largest city. In the few minutes that I have with you today, I want to talk about briefly about the economic impacts of travel and tourism, talk about our successes from the previous year, present our budget request, and end with our work plan for the next year. But first, a quick review of Visit Bakersfield. As I mentioned, we are a division of the Economic and Community Development Department. We are funded solely through transient occupancy tax, or TOT, funds. We are not funded by general fund or PSVS, and we are an example of an absolutely positively successful public-private partnership between the city of Bakersfield and the Greater Bakersfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. The CVB Board of Directors, whose names appear here, provide us with valuable counsel and community feedback. Their continued support and insights have been key to this productive partnership since its inception 14 years ago. And although visitor traffic has been down, not just in Bakersfield but worldwide, we do continue to assist visitors with information, but in addition to visitors, our customers include human resources professionals, people interviewing for jobs, new residents, real estate agents, business owners, real estate investors, and all kinds of referrals. So when people think of us as the Bakersfield Visitor Center, we really are the Bakersfield Information Center. Here's our organizational chart. It's probably the simplest one you'll see in the entire budget review process, but make no mistake, we're a small group of people, but we make big things happen. Tourism helps power Bakersfield's economy, and many people think that travel and tourism is nice, and it is, but I want you to know that travel and tourism is full of a whole lot of dollar signs. Let me show you two quick charts. This is the transient occupancy tax revenue chart back as far as fiscal year 05, 06. You'll see the dip in the Great Recession, and once we came out of the Great Recession, we were on a steady climb. We were cooking with gas. We made it as far as $9.9 million two fiscal years ago. Then the pandemic hit, and we quickly dropped 20%. Some good news, happy to tell you that the projections for next year are up to $8.5 million. The second chart shows hotel occupancy rates in Bakersfield for the seven-week period beginning in March. When we do these kind of charts, we look at year-over-year comparisons, and we compare it to the previous year, that's really no surprise because last year, at that same time, we were in a freefall because of the start of the pandemic. What was surprising is when we looked at the year before, 2019, pre-pandemic, and we're actually pacing ahead of where we were in 2019. These data don't suggest that we necessarily have rebounded, but it is positive data, and I wanted to show you, because when occupancy rates increase, TOT increases. Now you've seen those two charts, so it's time to ask yourselves the David Lyman question, which is, so what? What does this all mean? Well, I'm glad you asked. Let me show you. Even though there's less TOT revenue, TOT continues to generate millions of dollars to the city of Bakersfield, and people are still staying in hotels, and those stays have significant local economic benefits. Let's take a look at the direct economic impact from hotel spending in the city of Bakersfield. As you know, TOT in the city of Bakersfield is calculated at 12% of the hotel rate. Let's use that projected $8.5 million figure that I showed you just a moment ago. When we divide that by 12%, we get the amount of money that hotel customers will spend on hotel rates in the coming year, almost $71 million. When we add the two figures together, we get almost $80 million. That's the amount of money that people will leave on the front counters when they check out of hotels in the city of Bakersfield in the next year, almost $80 million, the direct economic impact from hotel spending in the city of Bakersfield. Please note, this does not include spending on what I call the three F's, the three F's of food, fuel, and fun. As I mentioned earlier, our goal is to help people spend their money, but that goal is based upon several assumptions, and one of them is that, well, there are people. And as we all know, in the past year and a half, there haven't been as many people that there normally is. And then also, there were not as many places for people to spend their money. But in that fine tradition of turning lemons into lemonade, we repivoted our business plan, and we repivoted hard. So this is what our revised reality looks like. For all intents and purposes, we're not going to see a lot of foreign visitors in the next few years. We're not going to see group travel as we've known it for a while. We are going to see the drive market being the first to return. And also, in our efforts, we wanted to make sure that we supported our local venues and our businesses. When visitors returned, we wanted to make sure that those businesses were still around. I know I have only a few minutes, so let me quickly highlight some of our successes during the past year. Because people turned to Visit Bakersfield to find out what's going on, we created Webinar Wednesdays, and one focused on our local museum trail, telling people what was going on with our museums. Even though they were closed, they were still having many offerings. Another one focused on our outdoor recreational activities. As you know, during the pandemic, people needed to go outside, and we wanted to know what was open and where to go. We also talked about our outstanding food trucks. Live music concerts, not during a pandemic, but then the Fox Theater announced its livestream vaccine concert series. This was a unique way to give people live entertainment choices at home. And also, we wanted the Fox to still be around when all of this was over, so we signed on as the presenting sponsor. It was good for the Fox, but it was also good for Visit Bakersfield. As you'll see, every week, Visit Bakersfield's name went up on the marquee, and everyone who was watching the entertainment at home, they had to see the Visit Bakersfield banner behind each presenter. Our name was also on all the other promotional materials for each concert. This series was such a success that we quickly signed on for the second series that began after New Year. Bakersfield stuff, people asked for it. Where to get it? No one had the official branded items, so we opened an online retail store, bakersfordswag.com. We started out with a Christmas ornament and expanded a few months to hats, shirts, bags, shock glasses, and magnets, and we'll sell more as time goes on. If you have any suggestions, please let me know. Suggestions, of course, that you and your friends would like to purchase. Last year, I told you about our weekly coloring contests. Each week, a child received a $1,500 gift certificate to a local business, and that was our way to help prime the local economy when it opened up. Towards the end of 2020, we put all of those coloring book pages together for our first ever Baker- Bakersfield coloring book. We printed 500. They were all gone in about two and a half days. People ask us about the Kern River Parkway Trail. Where is it? How to access it? Where to park? What to see? What to do? So we created the first-ever Parkway Trail brochure with a usable map. It's available for downloading and also at all local bike shops. People were working from home, and hotels were empty, so we started a listing of all the local hotels that were offering day rates for people looking for quiet and private workspaces. And if you were working from home, then you absolutely needed official Bakersfield Zoom backgrounds. We created six, and they were so popular that we created six more. We've all heard a lot about frontline workers during the pandemic, but hotel workers were not always thought of when you thought of frontline workers, but they were. So we developed the Hotel Heroes Program to recognize those workers in Bakersfield hotels. The hotels loved it. We took this time to hang banners in the Amtrak parking lot promoting our city and directing people to our website. Well, as you know, there are not a lot of riders right now, but there will be, and we're ready. We also installed banners in the Amtrak parking lot for the same reason. One of the many things we do well is promote local events. Most annual events didn't happen, but some did with some changes, like the holiday lights at Calm, and we helped to get the word out on those. We also promote positive economic news about Bakersfield. Most of these items you won't see in the local news media, and if you do, chances are they began at the news desk at Visit Bakersfield. Positive news from Visit Bakersfield also finds its way into the Kern Business Journal in every issue. We also generate little-known facts about our city, like when it was our 123rd birthday. The news started with Visit Bakersfield, and it was picked up throughout town. We've been working on some audio driving tours and should have them finished shortly. They'll be GPS-based, and will provide turn-by-turn directions. These audio tours will be available free on our website and can easily be downloaded. Any week now, we will have Bakersfield selfie spots on our building, so you soon will be able to take your picture in front of the classic Bakersfield postcard anytime, day or night. Our new Visitors Guide will soon be here, probably in the next two weeks, just in time for summer. We call it the Official Bakersfield Insider's Guide, and it will be our flagship publication. We started on it before the pandemic began and quickly found out that we couldn't get commitment from advertisers due to the uncertain future. So we went ahead and produced our first-ever ad-free guide. I have to tell you, I think it's going to be our best one yet. And just a few weeks ago, you probably know, we launched the Bakersfield Brewery Trail, and it was a hit. We even made it on the front page of the local newspaper. This was our first savings pass, and demand for it was greater than any unexpected. Not only did people flock to these breweries to win custom t-shirts and growlers, the brewery owners gave it thumbs up. We launched the brewery trail on a Wednesday. One owner told us business for that Wednesday was double his usual Wednesday business levels. Another told us he had customers show up that he had never, ever seen before, and we ran through of our inventory of growlers in 72 hours. And in our spare time, we continue to be a source of information for all questions about Bakersfield, just like it says on our window. We answered questions like, what's open? Where to go? What to see? And we continued to send out Bakersfield information as requested. Oh, and we also got this cool new sign out front of our building, telling everyone about events that are going on. With that background, allow me to present our proposed budget for the coming year. Our total budget request, $1,073,852, broken down as follows. In salaries and benefits, $573,044, an increase of 4.43%. Our operating budget, $500,808, an increase of just under 1%. Again, our total, $1,073,852, 2.79% increase for an increase of $29,113. Here's our work plan for the year ahead. We will completely overhaul our website, visitbakersfield.com. It's five years old, and it needs to stay current if we want to stay up with the competition. We'll try again to hold our first Restaurant Week. We had great plans for this last year, but unfortunately, the pandemic lasted longer than anyone expected. We'll promote "Made in Bakersfield" products to help spur demand for locally-made items. We'll monitor and respond to comments and questions on travel apps and websites like TripAdvisor, Travelocity, and Expedia. We'll repackage our Webinar Wednesdays into Tourism Tuesday podcasts. And when large groups return, not if, but when, we will be there with our Bakersfield information table like we've had at the CIF Wrestling Championships. We'll launch another Bakersfield Savings Pass using mobile technology, and in that same vein, we will explore other mobile opportunities for distributing information. We'll also focus our marketing efforts on, there it is, on the reopening of Bakersfield from a travel and tourism perspective. When people begin traveling again, we want them to know that our attractions and amenities will have the welcome sign out for everyone, and we want to get that message out to places like Las Vegas and around national parks, where we know that people travel to when they pass through Bakersfield. We'll consider expanding operating hours into the weekend, and we'll also continue to be the central source for anything and everything related to California's ninth-largest city. In closing, let me remind you that Bakersfield is the 52nd-largest city in the nation by population, larger than places like Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, or St. Louis, Missouri. But when you look at the number of employees in each city's destination marketing organization, Explore St. Louis has 57, Visit Pittsburgh has 29, and Visit Bakersfield, 5. If there's only one thing that you take away from my presentation today, and I mentioned it a few minutes ago, I hope it will be this: We're a small group of people that makes big things happen. Council members, Mayor, it's my distinct honor and privilege to introduce to you now the crew of Visit Bakersfield. Andrea Marakim, our Guest Services Representative, otherwise known as our Director of First Impressions. Joe Simpson, our Marketing and Events Specialist. Evangelina Medina, our Senior Sales Representative. Matt Billingsley, our Sales Manager. Mr. Billingsley holds the distinguished Certified Sports Events Executive Designation from the Sports Events and Tourism Association. These are the people who do the hard work. They do the heavy lifting, and they allow me to come before you each year and tell you just some of the many successes we've had in promoting Bakersfield as a place to come for a day, for a week, for a lifetime, and yes, a place to spend their money. I thank you for your kind attention this afternoon, and as always, I'd enjoy answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. So what? So what? You are fantastic in asking the most effective presentation question, and that is the presentation question for effective presenters. So what? And thank you so much for answering it with $80 million. Andrea, Joe, Evangelina, Matt, and Mr. Lyman, thank you so much for all that you're doing. And you're able to be so resourceful and creative under the most challenging circumstances. I've always admired that about you and your team. I just want to thank you. And, Mr. Clegg, what can we do maybe to have even more increased collaboration in our social media with Visit Bakersfield? If there's something that we can do with the city site, this team always has such positive aspects to promote, and I think it would be a wonderful thing for the general public to have more knowledge of the kinds of things that are going on in our community.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think that there are opportunities to do that. I would actually look to Mr. Lyman if he wants to also provide any comments on that. I think, you know, cross-marketing is very important. Our Visit Bakersfield is looking at a contract entity to help manage social media, and maybe there's some opportunities with that new relationship to make sure we're doing all the cross-marketing that we can.
Yes, Mayor and Council, just to follow up on what Mr. Clegg said, I don't know exactly what time it is, but 4 o'clock today is the deadline for any social media firm to submit their proposal for our social media management contract. So we do have that out. We do have a contractor on board for the last year, and we're looking to review what we have now and take it to the higher levels. So, and any suggestions you may have, we're always interested in getting the word out, and we do find that social media is very effective in educating people, not just on events, but also what we do.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions from my colleagues. Thank you for your good work.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we just have a few slides as wrap-up. This is our second and final budget workshop, and Mr. Hewitt will walk through what some of our next steps are, and also just cover a couple of the areas where we're recommending some modifications to the budget as preliminarily provided to the council.
Good evening, or good evening, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Chris Hewitt with the manager's office. A few brief slides today, just to wrap up what has been a process that started on May 5th, with our Budget Overview Presentation continued on May 10th, and then your last meeting on June 2nd. Of course, we're here on June 7th, and we've just wrapped up all the different budget presentations from the remainder of the departments. So what's ahead of us? That's June 16th, that's next week, where we do plan on having a set of documents before you that would adopt the budget for fiscal year '22 that begins on July 1. So I wanted to walk through today just a few items as wrap-up. One, looking at some council budget requests and alternatives that were requested. Two, just want to mention, and I won't go into too much detail on this, but there will be some technical changes that you'll see with the budget as it comes forward. And then three, again, those next steps, both on the 16th and then looking out into the future on what's ahead of us in terms of budget items. So let's talk a little bit about some alternatives. There was a request made of staff to look at possible alternatives to the freeway landscape projects that were proposed as part of the Public Works PSVS package. Again, there was some discussion within the Public Works presentation. What we're not recommending is the reducing or eliminating of two-measure-funded freeway projects, and that's the Hoskins Interchange Landscape Improvements and the Monument Sign Updates. What we're really talking about maybe is an opportunity to redirect some dollars within the landscape projects, both for the West Side Parkway and State Route 58 projects, and taking, again, some of that money and addressing either some landscape improvements on city streets as outlined earlier, or potentially taking some of that money that I'll go over here in just a moment and shifting that to the Kern River Parkway to provide some additional comprehensive resources to focus specifically on that amenity. So let's jump right into that plan. Outlined here on the table is staff's proposal that would shift about $1.9 million total from those two freeway projects into different areas or units that would be dedicated specifically to provide services along the Kern River Parkway, potentially in those adjacent parks and in some of those public spaces, again, that complement the Parkway. So I won't go through every one in detail, but I will mention to you, one, that we're looking at actually a fourth Rapid Response Team on the Code Enforcement side of things. Before I get too deep into this, these are all new resources that were not outlined in any of the presentations that you saw earlier. So these would be in addition to all of those proposals. The Code Enforcement Rapid Response Team, this would be a six-member team working 40 hours a week, again, focused primarily on engagement and encampments along the Kern River Parkway. The Recreation and Parks Department would look to supplement an additional Rapid Response Team, working 10-hour days, seven days a week. In these positions, it would be four positions, and the necessary equipment would be addressing things like broken irrigation, irrigation needs, vegetation, trash receptacles, spraying operations, tree and shrub trimming, and then some focus specifically on some of those parks and green spaces that kind of intermingle and coexist with the Parkway, including the Uplands area and San Miguel Grove. On the graffiti side, as we've noted earlier, we have a very successful graffiti abatement program. This proposal would add one maintenance craft worker with the focus area along the Parkway itself. We have a lot of signage, a lot of facilities, especially in the parks, and of course, we have the different structures for the bridges that span both the Parkway and the river. And this staff member would be assigned and would have the necessary equipment to get in there, and I say I'd be a little bit more proactive in abating the graffiti in the sense that we wouldn't necessarily be waiting until those calls for service came in. They would be out there each and every day. As the graffiti is there, it would be abated quickly. And then we know that this plan would not be, it would not be comprehensive without the need for some additional outreach services, so we have allocated within this plan $100,000 to, again, up the ante there as it relates to necessary resources to try to get these individuals that we'll be coming in contact with to the appropriate services. And then finally, last week, this council approved a seventh Clean City Team to focus on the Kern River Parkway. This plan would actually allocate another $140,000, which is the annual cost, to place an additional team on the Kern River Parkway. So in essence, you would have two Clean Cities teams out there, working daily, focused on the Parkway, removing litter, debris, bulky items, supporting all these other departments in the necessary efforts to keep that amenity at a level that is acceptable. So again, this plan includes ongoing costs, which include the salary and benefits of the staff, that staff is recommending to be added, plus the annual contract costs of about $1.1 million. The balance is equipment costs, and I don't have every last piece of equipment outlined there for you, but for the Code Enforcement side of things, I can tell you that's about 10 pieces of equipment and some other ancillary pieces that are necessary for deployment in the river. This is not your standard pickup trucks, and while we do have some of those, there are some more specialized equipment to get into that riverbed, again, with the focus being on those areas predominantly for this group. We talked a little bit about that convention center lobby remodel, and absent any feedback to the contrary, we do plan on moving forward with including that in the budget, which will be an amendment next week for your consideration. Again, a two-year project to focus on the design elements the first year and then the construction on the second year. And then this other item actually came up in a prior committee meeting, and again, wanted to see if there was any further feedback before staff moved forward with this. But right now, there are currently four motorcycles that the Bakersfield Police Department utilizes in what's called frontline status. And actually, in the current year budget, there was the allocation of dollars to purchase four more motorcycles. That's in process. They're actually at a local vendor right now being outfitted, so we'll have a total of eight frontline bikes here in the not-too-distant future. Next year's budget includes four additional motorcycles. The request was to actually double that number of motorcycles being purchased next year from four to eight. That would just be an exchange, replacing four sedans that are on the current replacement list with motorcycles. The unit cost is a bit less for a motorcycle than it is for a sedan, but the police department will have the necessary individuals that are trained and ready to go. It provides the Traffic Division a bit more nimble of a resource, so there is support for that should the council want to move this proposal forward. Again, I mentioned the couple of technical changes. When you have a $700 million budget, we have a lot of entries, so there are going to be some small technical changes. Doesn't materially change anything that this council or the public has seen over the last several meetings, but those items will be outlined. Didn't want those to be a surprise to this council or to the public. And then again, next steps. Next week, looking to adopt the budget, we will have the adoption of the statutorily required appropriations limit, and then the approval of a salary schedule per CalPERS requirements. And then as we start to look ahead, this process will wind down, but the budget's a year-round thing. So we'll look to have some early discussion on our mid-year fiscal '22 planning efforts around opportunities to allocate some additional one-time funds for things like the ERP, the Section 115 trust, potentially some discussion around allocating resources to expand capacity at the BLNC, and then some opportunities, again, for some additional investment in the downtown area as it relates to development incentives. And then finally, something that we haven't talked about in detail just yet because we were waiting on some guidance, which we now have a little bit more of, but we're going to actually have a separate item on next agenda to give you all, in the public, an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act, the funding that the city will receive, the requirements around that funding, what it can and can't be used for, and then I think we'll get into some bigger buckets in terms of ideas and concepts that we're looking for some feedback on, but trying to move those planning efforts forward. So with that, that's where we're at. Appreciate the time today. Turning back over to Mr. Clegg, and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, before we get to questions, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on the funding alternative recommendations and, you know, where our thinking on that is. So there are the two projects that were in the highway funds. The Hosking Interchange is a project that has been that has been planned and negotiated with Caltrans, and we don't want to take a step back from that project. The other two projects, as Mr. Hughott mentioned, the West Side Parkway and State Route 58, those are projects that I think there's consensus that they're good projects. It's a question of timing, and so there is an opportunity to put some consideration to those. The other thing that has changed, and I mentioned it earlier today, was the landscape has shifted where the governor's budget proposal, and we'll see all the elements that stay intact in this next week as the state legislature approves the budget, there's $440 million proposed to do highway landscape improvements and site hardening to address homelessness along our state highway corridors. That's exactly what our projects were intended to do. They were intended to make those areas easier to maintain, look better, and less attractive to individuals experiencing homelessness. So we don't want to completely take away all of those funds, because this state program has a matching requirement. And we think if we can leave $3 million in the budget, that allows us to be competitive in that grant process and go after additional state dollars and stretch our dollars. And I gave the $3 million number, because if we fund the Kern River Parkway proposal at $1.9 million, that leaves about that $3.1 million in that highway improvements grant match pot. That is my recommendation to council, is to leave those funds there, leverage those dollars, and that's kind of to Councilmember Gonzalez's point, we can do both. We can do some highway corridor improvements with that grant match monies. We can make some improvements along Kern River Parkway with this funding proposal. A couple of comments. I was going to respond to Councilmember Freeman earlier, and we moved past, and so I thought I would share them here at the end. I think, as it relates to street medians, just a couple of thoughts. One, the Truxton area and the Ming areas are actually already budgeted in projects in the current year, so those projects will be coming forward with some design proposals. I think there's still opportunities to do more with street landscapes and street medians. I would recommend that that's another item to add to that list of potential considerations for mid-year, is to put more projects on that list, but we have, I believe it's seven different street median projects in the capital improvement program for the proposed budget. Could we do more? Absolutely. Could we look at what amounts are available at mid-year from that year-end fund balance? I think that's a good place to think of, to look at, to fund additional street median projects beyond those that are already in queue. And then lastly, on the bike trail area, we have many projects that are budgeted along the multi-use path, and regularly, streets maintenance is going out and making those improvements. I think on the park side, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Freeman, that, you know, do we need additional trees to be replaced or irrigation? Again, adding these park staff to be able to spend more time in that area, I think, will tell us a lot more about what additional pieces we need there. And so we can ask parks to take a look at, you know, what funding might be required to help a little bit with infrastructure there, but what I'm suggesting is, we already have quite a few dollars dedicated to ongoing maintenance of the trail infrastructure itself. The biggest issue has been the maintenance around there, and this proposal for $1.9 million really gets at that maintenance issue in a much more proactive way. And so that's our recommendation, is to focus there, and then maybe on the street medians, we could look at mid-year for a few more projects.
There's no request on the computer. You can't request.
Tech, it seems like we don't have the request to speak coming up. If we can get some help out here, that would be good. I just pressed my help button. Thank you, Mr. Hughott, and thank you, Mr. Clegg. Just along the lines of the bike path and the river, can we get some trash receptacles? I know you and I have talked about that, and we hear that quite often about not having enough of trash receptacles out there, so.
A little bit of feedback on that. We've asked very specifically of parks, what's their recommendation there? Many of those receptacles get, if they're of lighter materials, they get vandalized quickly, and so their recommendation is to put fewer, sort of more robust receptacles along the way. But one of the concepts for the rapid response team, having a dedicated rapid response team committed to the Parkway, is that they can have a routine, I guess, schedule for going around two sites that have receptacles, and perhaps sites where we're encouraging people to bag their own garbage and make those pickups with that additional team.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Speaking of rapid response, that does seem to be where our constituents want our services. And so thank you for bringing that forward. And I wanted to ask on the graffiti abate, and I saw that listed, currently, is that more complaint-driven than being proactive? And I'm glad we're adding to that. I was with a developer touring Ward 1 last week, and I was rather embarrassed at the graffiti. And I know in certain parts of town, our constituents call, and maybe in other parts, they're just so used to seeing the graffiti that they don't call. And so the more we can be proactive in terms of graffiti, I think that will be good for our entire city. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to reinforce the importance of the Parkway and the Kern River Parkway, and thanks staff for working towards really making a real effort to clean it up. $2 million is a pretty big investment, and I think that a year from now, we'll have a much better-looking Parkway, much sooner than a year, but we want to get it cleaned up and keep it clean. So thank you very much. And I would also, if you wanted feedback on the motorcycles, I think that's a good idea to double down on the motorcycles. We've had discussions for quite a few years, and the feedback I get in the community is that's a good use of dollars. So thank you, staff, and I think we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, can you just tell us once more what the breakdown of the $1.9 million on the Park? And is that, I want to know, is that an ongoing $1.9 million, or is that capital, a lot of at one time, just so we can know what's this year and kind of what will the future years be?
If I could get the city clerk to bring the presentation back up real quick. Well, we're getting the presentation back up. Let me run through it here. So there's two columns on the right side of this table, one that is labeled "ongoing costs," and then there's one that's labeled "one-time costs." So the ongoing costs include all the salary and benefits for the city staff that this proposal outlines, which I believe is 10 positions or 11 positions, excuse me.
The million-one, I can see it now.
Correct.
You think that could continue as an additional ongoing expense, potentially?
Yeah, the two variables there are the outreach services and the Clean City Team. Both of those, you know, would be contract services. It could vary year to year, but we lump those in in the ongoing costs, because we think there's something that needs to happen each year. Yeah, the "one-time cost" column there is about $827,000. That's all your equipment and the necessary startup costs.
Okay, thank you. One other question. The June 16th council mending meeting, you said, I think you said you'll be explaining a number of sort of additional items that, well, you will then explain how they're going into the budget?
Correct.
And is that just, you want to explain them to the council as opposed to, we're not voting on the budget, or we are on June 16th?
You are scheduled to vote on the budget on June 16th. We do have, it's the last regular council meeting.
Okay, so you're going to tell us, by the way, you're going to say, oh, and these things are in it.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we'll recap kind of where we started a few months ago, and then we'll walk you through kind of how we got to where we're going to be on the 16th in terms of all the different pushes and pulls and changes that includes some of the items that I reviewed today.
But if I could, just to be clear, there are not substantive changes beyond this proposal to add monies for the Kern River Parkway and shift away from some of those highway projects. That's the big change. The other technical aspects are very small, you know, technical clerical-type adjustments. So the budget that was presented in the budget book, the preliminary budget book, and as we've discussed throughout this process, it's really just this shift for the Kern River Parkway, the shift of the motorcycles, and adding some funds for the arena or the convention center lobby. Those are really the only three changes from the first proposed budget.
Okay, I would encourage you, you said there are, you know, because of grants and these other things, we're sort of now backtracking on cleaning up our boulevards in town, which I don't really like to hear. I would encourage, you said there were, there's seven others, I'm sure there are at least seven others, that we see if any more of those can make their way into the budget by the time you finish crunching all your numbers. And I see those are in there too, as opposed to saying, well, we'll find out at mid-year. I know we usually do have extra funds at mid-year, but personally, and I think at least Councilman Parley will agree with me if he's not here today, this cleaning up the look of our city, it came through even on that chamber report, number three, and we're saying, well, we might do three roads. I just think that that's a priority that ought to be in the official budget. It'll probably take over a year to even get it done, but, and it's not that expensive compared to other things that might go in the budget. So I think that has equal importance with a lot of the other things we've talked about that are in fact in the budget. So that's just a request.
Now, I appreciate the feedback, Councilmember. We'll see what, as we crunch the numbers, as you said, if there's any extra room.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Cleaning up our city is a priority of our constituents, I believe. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Thank you to staff for being so responsive to this council's requests, especially over the last couple of weeks. I appreciate the response related to the convention center lobby, and I'm excited that's moving forward. And I'm sure if he was here, he'd make a comment. Councilmember Parley has been a champion for the additional motorcycles for quite some time, and so I want to thank him for his leadership in this area, and thank you all for being responsive there again. Then finally, I just want to make a comment. You know, I'm looking forward to the mid-year discussion, because there are a number of issues that you've itemized that are really important that this council consider, that aren't necessarily apparent or will be recognized by the general public, but it's important that we recognize them, particularly the ERP system, which will have a significant impact to our operations over time, and then also that Section 115 trust, which I've been, I love to talk about. For the last several years, I've talked about it, and really can't wait to see that come up. So thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see any other requests to speak for this section, so thank you, Mr. Hughott, thank you, Mr. Clegg. And now, Madam Clerk, did we receive any public speaker cards for this workshop?
Madam Mayor, we received three speaker cards regarding this workshop item.
Thank you, and go ahead and call those, and thank you for your patience, members of the public in waiting to speak. Oh, go ahead.
The first public speaker is Troy Hightower.
Thank you. And while he's coming up, for those of you who are viewing online, if you would like to comment, you're welcome to submit an email to the city clerk, and she'll get those to the council. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hightower.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. I have some comments related to the Economic Development Department budget. I'm pleased to see that there are some buckets of money that appear to be what, you probably remember the comments I made earlier about some proposed projects we had, some affordable housing projects, active transportation, safe street-type projects. And it appears from the presentation today that under the Community Development Unit, there is funds available for those types of projects. And it says here in the report I have, that no specific project for this funding has been made at this time. So I would urge the council and the city to consider some of the projects that we've submitted. In addition, under community revitalization, right now, the EOA funds are generated just from tax increment, and I think it may be a good idea to consider using some measure N funds to supplement the EOA funds. We have a client right now that's applying for EOA funds. I do want to, Councilmember Harris is not here, but I want to thank him for the referral from last time to staff. We have heard from staff, and we do have a meeting scheduled with them. So I'd like to thank him and city manager for that as well. In closing, there was a, I believe it was added security for the Development Services parking lot. We use the city parking lot on 18th Street, and my vehicle's been vandalized and other people have been vandalized in that building, and I would urge the city to look at that. It's the city-owned 18th Street parking lot. With that, I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower, for your comments. Just two responses. Number one is regarding the EOAs. Actually, for the last two years, we funded each EOA zone $100,000 annually through PSVS. So it's not just the tax increment financing. And then number two is there are significant plans to upgrade the security at the downtown parking structure this fiscal year.
Excellent, that's good news. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Next public speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Matthew Spender.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Matthew Spender. I am the executive director of the historic Bakersfield Fox Theater, here to, I guess, say thank you for some of the budget that was used on us, because it was a huge deal. In a previous presentation, you saw the involvement with our first livestream vaccine series, the first time we've ever done something like that, and it was a complete success. If it wasn't for the support that we received from Visit Bakersfield, we would not have been able to pull off what we pulled off with this series. Because of that success, we did the second dose. That, too, was an extreme success, and it brought a lot of positive attention to our theater. My theater's been dark since March 12, 2020, and at that time, I made a commitment to my board and my staff that we were going to try to come out of this bigger and stronger. And because of this, this was a huge help in allowing us to do that. This series, via social media, reached over 215,000 people. As they were swiping through, these are people that saw the historic Bakersfield Fox Theater was not doing anything, that we were putting up a fight and trying to still bring entertainment to our town. Additionally, it had 74,000, almost 75,000 views. So those are people that actually got engaged and watched entertainment from my building. Those were the 75,000 people that saw that sign that was on the back of our stage, very proudly being hung. Not only did it bring positive attention, but it also allowed me to pay artists. We had over 62 different bands during this series, over 22 different nights that I was able to cut checks to at the end of the night and help pay their bills, hopefully, as this pandemic was ongoing. Additionally, it helped to pay some of our essential bills. So the money, at least from the perspective of the historic Bakersfield Fox Theater, is it was well-spent. That's all I have for my time right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spender. Appreciate your leadership and the resilience that the historic Fox Theater has shown, and your creativity. I see you climbing up there, sometimes putting up the signage for our community, but we really appreciate you very much. Councilmember Gonzalez? Or is that the leftover from the last one? Sorry. Thank you. Next public speaker, please.
Emma De La Rosa.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emma De La Rosa, policy advocate with Leadership Council. As you're preparing to finalize the budget, I still have As you're preparing to finalize the budget, I still have a few recommendations for staff and for councilmembers to consider, whether it be for this budget season, if not for mid-year, if not for the American Rescue Plan allocations. First of all, beginning with the 8.7 million in general street repairs, we are asking that staff prioritize Ward 1 in repairs for communities of Lakeview and Casaloma. I was out in Casaloma a few weeks ago doing outreach, and the sidewalks look like this. There is no way that people on a wheelchair can go, can use the sidewalks efficiently if the sidewalks look like this. They're lifting. We're also asking for complete streets or street calming enhancements on Union Avenue and Ward 1. I know Union Avenue is, Union Avenue on Ward 2 is included in the budget, but this specific ask is for Ward 1. Again, we know that TCC is also going to cover that area, but, you know, preparing to have some funding there for that area would be super helpful. The street light study, I don't think it's been released yet, but that is something that we are very interested in, and we would love, we recommend that street light installations go on Lakeview and Casaloma, especially on Casaloma Drive. We understand Casaloma Drive is an area that is shared by the city and the county, but that neighborhood is in complete darkness. I welcome you to go out there one of these days around 9:00 PM, and you will see that it's completely dark. They need lights. We are also asking for street calming enhancements on N Street to support the mobility of senior residents living at the senior apartments and promote traffic safety during school hours. And increased community revitalization funds to, at least 10 million funds must be allocated through a participatory budgeting process to ensure that the funds are spent according to community needs. So I know the 3 million are there. We are asking for an increase along with the funding allocation for Casaloma as well, and also asking for that budget to be participatory. Councilmember Smith spoke about the issues of code enforcement, vandalism, and the vacant homes. A really good way of sustaining those buildings and making sure that there isn't any more issues with vandalism is to acquire the land through land acquisition grants, which actually there is one available through the state to build affordable housing. And we also ask for housing rehabilitation focused on low-income neighborhoods. That is actually, there is a housing element program in the annual progress report, and there wasn't any specific information on that. I'm wondering if it's because of a lack of funding, so we are urging that there is funding for housing rehabilitation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Madam Clerk, are there any other requests?
Madam Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. And council, we need a motion to receive and file.
Mayor, motion to receive and file.
You have a motion. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Vice Mayor Weir, Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Parley. Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir, Councilmember Arias, and Councilmember Parley absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And to all departments, thank you so much for your presentations. I've been through a few of these, and this was done very efficiently, so thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned at 2:33.